Work on, you have to help me set one up.
I'm seriously.
You know my name's Robyn Raccoon, Roxy.
Yep. Pets on Instagram, I mean they get more likes than humans, yeah.
And they should.
Frankly. Why do you think every presidential candidate is getting involved?
I'm not running for Roxy.
Because they want a friend when it's all about.
Exactly. Also that.
Enduring.
Yep.
Roxy will be my.
All right, let's go ahead.
Yeah.
That's our last time. So, we're on TV, the show? Okay, welcome folks, we've been in executive session, but my name's Kevin McCarthy and I'm Chair of the Board of Selectmen and welcome to the July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen Board of Selectmen meeting. With that, I'll start the meeting off with open con- uh, with a public comment if there is any, anybody see any public comment? Any items that are not on the agenda? I see a couple of hands up, one on the left first.
Well, I think Robyn was your first.
You wanna go Rob first?
Fine, I can.
Good evening, I'm Rob Lawrence, fifteen Beet Street, here as the Chair of the Board of Health. Um, I'd like to start the process of attempting to change the name of the Board of Health to the Board of Public Health. I have just some notes, I just wanted to give you a sense of where I'm coming from. In public health, the community is the patient of the Board, not the individuals, unlike Dr. Schubert, he treats individuals. We treat the community and our mission of the Board is to keep the community safe and healthy. And the parent agency at the state level is Massachusetts Department of Public Health, not Department of Health. Our members, we have a biochemistry professional, Mike Palastri has a PhD. We have an environmental health professional, Lynn Doxy is a Master of Public Health. And myself, I'm a dentist and I also have Master of Public Health. Our staff is an excellent staff, we have a public health nurse, Mary Goodwin, who's an RN, an NPH. Director of Public Health, Pam Fahy is an NPH. And we have a field engineer, Jason Federico. So, how do we, what does our programming consist of to accomplish our mission of keeping the community safe and healthy? Well, we have some groundwater issues that we attack, notably through Title V septic system issues. We try to maintain that the community who do have septic systems are in compliance. We work with the sewer commission in those areas where the sewer has come through and the sewer commission deems that individuals should come off septic and move on to the sewer to protect the public health. And then we also work with stormwater drainage when plants become a forest. Uh, we have disease prevention clinics, most notably our influenza clinic, which Mary and several of our nurse colleagues do every year. And then we have communicable disease tracking, we track measles, we track influenza, we track West Nile virus. All this is in terms of making sure that these issues don't become an epidemic and stay out of the pan. And then, plus we have environmental issues, actually deal with restaurants and food service permitting, sunscreen education. Mary's run some clinics down at the beach, Sandy Beach, in terms of sunscreening. Aerial spraying from the state, which attacks our mosquito populations. And then we also have gotten into what I call building condemnation. Uh, we take in issues of lead paint and hoarding and pest control. Uh, we work with elder housing, both, and this is one case where we do work with some individuals, but in general it's elder housing. Uh, we work with school health, the school nurses. We're liaison with local physicians as needed and we also participate in emergency management. So in sum, I, I think the organization's name should reflect its mission. And our mission is the health and safety of the public health, not just health. So I'd like to start the process, if possible, to establish a name change, to make it more in line with what we do.
We can't dialogue too much on this, but um, what would the process be if that, oh, do we want, or is that be getting into it too much?
I, I might have to just, uh,
Or is your first word?
My Dr. Counsel.
Yeah.
And then we'd explore state law to see if we can change the name for some statutory reason. And if we can, how we would go about it.
Okay.
Other, other boards have done that and I'm sure that if anyone else has done that, then we can just see what they, how they handle this.
Right. So I, I would see the way we would leave this then as we heard this, because we can't interact on this here.
Right, absolutely.
But I think what we should do is, Chris, is let's put on the agenda in the next few agendas, this is not critically, in the next few agendas, what the process would be. I, I think particularly we'd all wanna know what the process is and then we'll take it from there.
I think it would be a better than the cap of the town if we were the first board to change the name to something that's realistic.
Well, what we'll do, Dr. Lawrence, is we'll set up what that process is.
Okay.
And then once we have, well then we'll probably then have, it, have an open session and then you'll come in, come in and say similar things and then,
Absolutely.
and give people an opportunity if they didn't have any objection. In the meantime, we'll have investigated what that process is and we'll have questions that sounds like, one of my meeting was, how many other towns in the world? So, you know, we'll have those kinds of questions, but we will engage in this, cause you consider it important and we'll engage in and bring it to a court, take it to our, the process, okay?
Okay, well thank you all for your time, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, I'm glad for that.
Happy summer.
Okay, next up on the, you can identify yourself and.
Hi, I'm Leonard Jenkins, Vice Chair of the Water Commission. And I sent all of you an email today, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, unfortunately I was driving down from Maine, so I didn't get a chance to do it.
I, I didn't get it.
But, um, there have been problems with the Elms Meadow wellfield. This has been a consistent problem for as long as I've been on the Board. As a matter of fact, um, we were attending meetings with the planning board when I first got on the Board about the development of James Lane. And the planning board kept insisting to us, the water commissioners, that the wellfield was permanently closed and was never going to open again. Even though, uh, all of you are well aware of the capital recovery charge that you have in your water bill every quarter, a million and a quarter dollars was put into the refurbishing of the pumping station at the wellfield. Since that time, we have also insulated the wellfield, so it's no longer seasonal. It gives us twenty-two percent of our water to our citizens, three sixty-five. And if the water does not go up to the water treatment plant, it just goes through the pumping station. It has injected chemicals into it and it goes directly into the homes, specifically the ones close by. Well, um, we have been trying to discourage people from dumping yard waste and also landscapers from doing that because the wells are shallow and once they get polluted, that is the end of that water source. And if that water source is gone, that means a huge increase in cost to our water customers, besides getting rid of a natural resource. Through the years, we have had articles in The Mariner that were, you know, several pages with full pictures. We've had Bill Stuffers. Uh, the latest thing we've put out was, um, I'm sure some of you have seen it on Facebook, that Carrie's put it on her Facebook page. It was on the Cohasset website, it was a seasonal reminder about protecting our water supply, reminding people about what they're putting on their lawns, wherever they are, in watersheds, so we're not polluting surface water or the wellfield. Plus also reminding people about their pets. Because we find people now with pets have a tendency, instead of when they go up to the water plant, using the ten acres that are adjacent in the Papay Reservoir, they just let their dogs run free and let them poop all over the lawn where our employees are working, or they go right up to the intake of the water plant. And I'm sure Dr. Schubert can tell us what that does to water.
Bring worm around, worm.
Yep.
Those are just the worms.
They're just the worms, not everything. You know, but now, uh, in the last few days, uh, it's come to our attention that we're getting more dumping. And then also, there has been a truck that's parked in the driveway to the, uh, pumping station. Now, there is a sign that's right there and I don't know how many of you has seen the pictures. But, um, the sign specifically says, right at the entrance, it says Town of Cohasset Public Water Supply. No dumping, trespassing, or yard waste. Any acts that may pollute the water supply or damage a town property are prohibited, three hundred dollar fine, town bylaw. Now, this bylaw is under CONCON because CONCON is the enforcing agent. So it also indicates on this sign to help, to protect this valuable resource, to report violators to the Cohasset Police Department, indicating to telephone number to call. Well, unfortunately, we were just informed that the police can't do anything because we didn't have a no parking sign, so now we have a no parking sign on the gate. I drove by there on my way home from Maine about four thirty this afternoon and this truck is still there. Now, can you imagine if this truck decided to go up to the fire department and just park on the side next to the driveway there at the fire department? Would that be allowed? I just can't understand what's going on. I would like some advice on what we can do because, uh, we have talked about putting a fence around the area to discourage it. Though it would have to be like an eight-foot cyclone fence and that would cost upwards of a hundred thousand dollars. What I've been trying for the last several years instead is to try and get some community support, to get this area cleaned up and turn it into a bird sanctuary and hopefully get garden clubs involved to give us, uh, plants that attract birds, butterflies, and bees. And make it a jewel of the community rather than a dump. You know, but we can't even get anybody who wanted to come during the townwide cleanup, we only got two people each time. And it'd be nice if, you know, we could have some support and some suggestions on how to go about that. A member of Open Space suggested we go to CPC to see if we can get the funds to turn this into the jewel of the community. And I would like you to consider this, think about it. We are having a meeting on Tuesday, if anybody wants to give us any comments before then or show up at our meetings, that would be nice.
Okay, um, thank you for, it seems pretty, you know, this has been an issue several times over the years here. So, let's think about what we should, we, we can't get into a dialogue, this is not on the agenda.
No, I know it's not.
What does the Board, what would the Board like to do?
Oh, I think it needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
So, what we'll do is we'll, uh, it, with the Board's direction, I'll put this on the agenda for the twentieth meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just get on the agenda.
And we'll discuss it and then I'll be talking or we can, Chris, maybe if you can do some exploring into what. We'll start the, we'll have the discussion amongst ourselves and the more we can, you can bring and we can bring to the table to get done on, on the twentieth. So, we're gonna cover this subject again, we'll, we'll put this on our agenda and we'll cover it and you're welcome to come back
Okay, well, we're not.
on the twentieth and engage in that discussion.
On the twentieth of August?
Of, of August, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And we'll put this on there, we'll see if the problem, we'll see what we're gonna do, we'll lay out what it is, so.
See, because unfortunately,
thank you for bringing this to my attention, it sounds like it's.
We're not the enforcing agent, so it's difficult for us.
You've laid out a number of things, so we will go over through these and I, I would think, go ahead and stop by the police department on your way home if you want to tell them there's a car back there. Because we, there is a no parking sign up there now.
Yeah.
It was put in today, so.
Okay, and Kevin, I want to show you, I had a problem with your email that's on the town website. It came back, it was undeliverable, so I sent it to your other emails that I had.
Oh, okay.
So check those out. So, uh, I don't know if your email's supposed to be M with a double C?
No, I've been getting it, so I'll, uh,
Yeah.
my email works, so I'll, I'll send you an email from that tomorrow, just so you have the right address.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question about that, um.
It's, we can't, we, we, we have a public dis, we can't take, address this on a public discussion, however, on the twentieth, we're going to.
It was just about the police, did you contact the police, they, it said the, your offense to have it cut off.
All right.
You mean the police?
All right, we're, we're gonna be done, we're gonna be done on this right now. We're gonna, we're done on this subject now, but we are gonna take this up officially as a Board. Okay? Any other open comments? Come on up, please. You identify yourself, please. Yeah, get your name, address, please.
Sure. My name is Arlene Clayborne, I was before you before, in reference to a problem that I have and have had for a while. And, but, when I got home today, the problem was somewhat released, but not totally released, just temporarily. I've been having water problems with the water coming, uh, into a drain that is very small. And it's, and someone clogged the drain up completely. And I thought it was the town that did it because no one else had worked on the drain before. So, I believe the last, uh, I have a meeting with the town manager on Thursday.
You do, or you will, you will have a meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good.
On this Thursday. And I was wondering, uh, if I could have, and, oh, after the meeting, that I could have, um, I could come back to the Board and, and try to resolve.
You could come to the Board anytime you want during open, open comment, talk to us, so you can, our next meeting after today is on, gonna be August twentieth. But you're welcome to come to any of our meetings and give us commentary. My guess is, working with Tom Energy, he's a pretty good problem solver, that you're not gonna feel a need to do that. But if you ever do, you're welcome to come here and make comments, just like you did tonight, just like you did the other night. It's your government, come talk to us anytime you want.
Thank you very much.
So if you feel a need to, go ahead, but I have a feeling you're gonna be in very good hands, if you're not already.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay. Good, anything, thank you, anything else for open com? Any else for open comment? Okay, good, so, we're going now to the next item on the agenda, uh, which is Board and Committee Appointments. The first one we have is election workers. So, Chris, can you, do we have anybody here with us?
No, I, it's just, uh, it, it,
I have it right here.
Yeah, the, Chris.
Just explain what this is, excuse me, but we all have it right now.
Yeah, pursuant to state law, um, Selectmen officially appoint election workers, um, not earlier than the fifteenth of July, nor later than the fifteenth of August. And this is your one meeting in between those two moments. Uh, so, uh, the town clerk has provided you with this list, which has been created pursuant to the process. I think many of these people are repeat, uh, hu, uh, election workers, uh, and, um, the clerk has asked that you appoint this list. There are about seventeen of them, right?
And this fills the need completely?
Uh, as far as I'm aware, yes.
Uh, these are the ones?
They're not all used at every moment, but if it's a.
Yeah, but these are the ones that the Board wants to appoint, uh, the, uh, clerk wants to appoint.
The clerk wants to appoint, yes.
Okay.
She, she, she solicits recommendations from the political parties and then fills as needed with others, uh, so.
All right. With that process, mhm. Any comments, Diane?
Yeah, just how do you want the motion, do you wanna, just, want me to read them all?
I don't think we need to do them individually, no, no, no. Yeah, we can do them all together.
Read the list out loud?
I think you gotta read the list.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Yes.
So I move, um, that we appoint the following individuals as the two thousand nineteen election workers for a one-year term. Abigail Elvis, Joseph Estino, James Carroll, Jody Doyle, Bernadette Faulkner, Carla Ghetto, Epproy Fitzsimmons, Kelly Gretsch, Deborah Prepsak, Rebecca Mattie, Virginia Adamy, Ruth Nedro, Susan Ryan, Carol Smith, Nancy Trolin, Lauren Walsh, and Kenneth Warner.
Second.
Any, uh, first and second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If I oppose, that's your name, Ms. Tracy? Thank you. Next one is the Alternative Energy and Cable Advisory. So, could we have, is there a representative from that committee who wants to come forward? And also, Chris, we're gonna need guidance on this one, because there's a large number.
You can take Alternative Energy first, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alternative Energy is the one we're gonna do first, yes, that part. So, if you can introduce yourselves, and I think you may have had co- coordinating discussions with Chris, I think. And, um, we can go through, because we have a, a number of applications here, how you, uh, we, uh, you suggest we could, we proceed.
My name is, uh, Steven Girardi, President, Wayne and Hall Street, I'm the current Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee.
And I'm Mary Jo Larson, twelve Virginia Lane, and I'm a former Chair and Vice Chair of Alternative Energy and his assistant.
Great, welcome, folks.
The best.
You're both, you're both in very good shape.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if you, have any, we have a number of applications here and,
Yes.
do you have any suggestions and then I'll discuss with the Board what they wanna do, whether they wanna, if there's anybody here that's come to be interviewed, we definitely wanna do that and, uh, we'll go ahead and just make our decisions.
So I like to, I don't want to hold too focused, but I like to make a good decision, uh, obviously Mary Jo and we have Pat Gooding, a former AC. Remember, she has come back and she's done a lot with, uh, the AC. There's an al, also another applicant in your list, um, Mike Schmidt. He's, um, he works for the Hall Municipal Light Plant, is an Assistant, uh, Person Manager. He's like Mike Conklin, William Hangle. Um, he's very well-known in Generation, uh, Energifying. He's a, he's a very spot young, young guy, guy that was on Beachwood. I would re, really recommend him beyond the committee as well, he would be a tremendous asset, especially if you start looking into great stuff. But here, you'd have a combo of myself and him to help with any kind of ventures you guys decide to go on.
So those are, those are applications that you're particularly eye on, is what you're saying essentially?
Yes.
You recommend those, okay?
Sure, so, um, so, I mean, um, this year we've had an incredible, uh, response of really talented people. Um, top on my list, absolutely, is Tanya Bodell. She's a superstar and we've been waiting for her for two years, so. Um, others that, that are very interested, uh, but as, um, as Steve mentioned, Patricia Gooding is here. Some of you may remember us puzzling through green communities and working with the MEI database. She's the best analyst we've ever worked with and, um, she's, she's invaluable as far as we're concerned, so we're really happy to have her back, right? Okay, um, and then of course Steve, Steve Wener, who's, um, of course, the champion for, uh, the work that's being done overall to address climate change. I won't go through all the names, Bill, uh, Fusco is the one who's doing the dashboards. So, so any effort to hold together a lot of complex information into a visual explanation is brilliant for us and, but also I think for the town. So, it's, it's really hard for us this year because we have ten, uh, applicants for seven positions, so. Anyway, those are the ones I wanted to mention. Uh, we have young applicants, like Colleen Leary has been coming to our meeting. So, um, I, I'm glad that you're the ones that are getting paid to make this tough decision. But, uh, but it's just, we have a super team of people, no matter what, I mean, we're really excited about the potential for this committee.
I do wanna say it's partly, and I think we've got so many applications, it's because this committee's done such a good job in this community. You've grabbed on this leading edge issue, you've done innovative things, you've got big things done, like the dump and the solar panel and a number of things. And, uh, so I really think it speaks very well for your committee, so I, you know, I thank you for that. And just point to it as an example to other committees that what can, what can be done and, uh, and what happens is you get many more people wanna be part of your team, so congratulations and, uh,
Thank you.
well, you've given us more of a job to do than usual. So, go ahead.
So if I can, so, correct me if I'm misunderstanding, then, this is the list that I have. So I have s, these are the,
Yeah.
out of the ten, these are the, I think the seven that you, that kind of float to your top. Steve, who's sitting there, Mary Jo, uh, Steve Wener, who's been, you know, really Mr. Alternative Energy and, uh, Bill Fusco, who you mentioned. Um, Pat Gooding is right there, uh, who did great work setting the whole dashboard for the first place. Mike Schmidt, who you mentioned, uh, uh, from, and then Tanya Bodell, who was instrumental, uh, in getting the solar.
Yeah, ten is, yeah.
And that's seven.
Is that seven?
That's seven.
Then we need to appoint seven, right?
We need to appoint seven.
And so what are the others that are, that, there's two or three others?
Yeah, there's three, Colleen Leahy, um, Maria, Marie Christie McDonald and Martha Gannon.
So, a question on th- those three, not that we're making any, but are they interested in any other committees than this committee?
Yeah, I believe they all.
Oh, reading your mind?
I believe they all are and, uh,
Oh, they all are, and she's in other committees?
So, well, I know Colleen Leahy's been working with you through the spring, right?
She started, she started coming in February.
Right, so she's been, I think she only,
She only picked, uh,
the Alternative Energy Committee and Marie Christie McDonald, too, has just specified this. And I think Martha was the third applicant. Now, were they?
Martha said, uh, willing to serve as.
Okay, she did, yep, yep, um.
Martha came in, in the early fall, then I haven't, we haven't seen her since the last, according to our meeting minutes, obviously, um.
We'll find a place.
Yeah. Are there any associate members?
Well, that's what we, we were talking about, that we're gonna ask you folks, uh, the Chair, about associate numbers, you know, so they can sit, you, you can just.
So if you're, just to, just to get through this, because if you're not structured, your committee's not that way there, we could consider that. I would, I would suggest to the Board, we consider that at another meeting, whether we restructure.
Yeah.
And I also, instinctively, almost throw out a hesitation on restructuring committees like that, because we have numerous committees and others may want whatever goes on here. We set presidents and so forth, but one way or the other, that's an idea for another time, though, just to, Diane?
Yeah, I just wanna add that this committee is actually already restructured.
Right.
Because this was a, a trico appointment with some, um, so we set off this, this spring, thanks to, uh, Mary Jo and Steve and others on that committee to kind of redesign this, make it a Selectmen-appointed Selectmen, um, you know, um, we wanna work with them. So, we did that and we had the discussion at the time between, of seven and nine. Um, so, you know, I, I think when you have good people, you wanna strike while they aren't hot, so I wouldn't, you know, dismiss the idea. But I do think it's probably a conversation for another time. I just wanna know about the, the various applicants and whether there's a reason more of them aren't here tonight.
Oh, sure, I could, I could respond to that.
Okay, thanks.
Actually, uh, Tanya's in California, I'm, people are out of town, basically.
Okay.
It's just, it's summer.
Yeah, yep.
So, there was, in each case, well, everyone on the list was, or at least I contacted Tanya for sure, Patricia. Uh, Bill Fusco wasn't able to come, but everyone.
Steve Wener's out of town.
Steve's out of town.
We also generally, we also generally contact people, and I think they've been contacted from us, so they're either here or they're not here.
Okay, yes.
Unless, unless there's a good reason or whatever.
Other commitments, yeah.
Diane?
No, I just wanna make, I just wanted to confirm that because.
Um, that said, though, is there any applicant here that wants to speak to us, uh, wants to address the Board with, if that's appropriate with the Board at this point?
Well, I think if somebody's here, we'd like to hear it.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, if you'd come up, then introduce yourself and.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you, don't leave, though, to get this done. Well.
The gate's locked, right, Chris, no one can leave, right?
The gate's locked.
Once you come in, you can't leave.
Hi, everyone, I'm Patricia Gooding, Lambert's Lane, Cohasset. Um, I think I started with the committee in two thousand and fourteen and worked on the Green Communities application and as folks already covered, um, started up the MEI, MEI database for the town, working with Chris and his folks. Um, I did put on my application, if you feel like, you know, don't shoot me, if you feel like you have somebody else that you really want to be on here, I'm willing to do something else, um, but, you know, I feel like I can contribute to the committee because I have the knowledge of what's going on and historical perspective of it and sort of the technical details. But that said, I'm willing to do other things, it's of best interest.
Okay.
Cause we need to get to Phase Three of the Green Communities.
Seem to me, uh, uh, really good data processes and are very difficult to get.
That was a very difficult task.
And, and, and this, this, I'm just, just thinking aloud of this committee that's, does a lot of important stuff, so.
I don't think you can.
I don't think we're gonna be looking too fast. You're lucky to let your, enough you to speak.
It's really not my background, I, anybody can learn it, so.
Good, anything else? Any questions, and Patricia?
Thank you for what you've done and what you'll continue to do.
Okay, so that'll take care of that phase, but there's no one else to speak with us, then. Seems to me we have, seems to me we have seven pretty good people for seven positions, does somebody wanna, do we wanna entertain the possibility of nominating that all seven?
That's why, I think that's,
read them off and, uh,
That must be, boy, I'm fine.
But, yeah, let's get a general feel of that would be, yeah, it seems kind of the way. And then, the others, we have, actively trying to find other places. Additionally, too, on these committees, people can come in as citizens and get quite involved, you know, they don't need to be a member of the committee to do lots of stuff and.
True.
And so, in any way, and I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is if the leadership and the experienced people,
Yeah.
I happen to know a number, if not all, seven at least, so.
Yeah, I think if we, if we do the seven that you recommend, I don't wanna slight the other ones because,
Yeah.
people may move out of town and they,
Well, they'd be first on the list, or they'd be right up on the list.
And I, I don't want them to be, you know, dismayed at the fact that they didn't get on and to keep their names. Again, with that idea of an associate, they can still show up in the meetings, so potentially go and be involved.
Until our meeting, we, we send invites and those folks would be invited, I would Keep the invitation, because that's how we actually met new people, right? Through the invitation process.
And you might also suggest that there's an associate open on conservation and like-minded people might enjoy that.
Yeah, absolutely.
A very good point, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Martha would be good, yeah.
Yeah.
Martha, should I?
Martha, I'll try.
So, do I wanna hear a motion on that?
Do you want them individually or together?
If we're gonna do the seven, I'm feeling from the board, we can do all seven at once.
I think we do all seven.
Do you wanna do the motion, Jack?
If I had a list of
Oh, you don't?
So, I move that we appoint, and I believe they're all, here's, wait, hold on.
No problem.
Because I believe one of the things we discussed were, was staggering the terms, so that, because this is a brand-new committee. So if we were to appoint everybody for a three-year period, then they all roll off for three years. And I think what we should consider doing is doing, you know, two threes, two twos, or three threes, help me out, no. Two, three
Let's do, let's make this, how about, what do we get, how about three threes?
Two twos and two ones, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, yes, let's
This makes a difference then, is, let's hear from the board and the leaders, who you would like to see as being the three-year people, if I may? Is it?
They're gonna be back, they're gonna be back anyway. You know, it might be, put you in a better thing if we kinda did it by random or lottery, that way we don't have to ask anybody to have to rank them.
Yeah, I mean, and honestly, we have three people here tonight, so I could start with them for three-year terms and then I'm gonna move down the list.
Actually, I would, I would nominate Tanya Bodell for three years.
Okay.
I agree.
In my place, I really would.
Okay.
I'll take a two-year.
No, we want you of three years.
Well, you, you don't want you get the bug, right, you don't wanna go off, so, okay, so
Is there anyone else, any other?
I'll take three, I've not been able to move out of class for a very long time.
Yeah, we're not gonna let you, so
You what?
I'm gonna
Move out of this town for a long time.
Okay, so those would be, and there's a third three, generally feeling here, just
It's in Pat, who's in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, as a data person, I think they oughta try to get
Okay, so, um
On a long range one, right?
For, um
Why don't we do those then?
Yep, so for a three-year term on alternative energy, I move that we appoint Steve Gerardi, Patricia Gooding and Tanya Bodell.
Any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, nay, that's unanimous, Tracy?
Um, and then, um, for two-year terms, I'm going, I'll make a motion to appoint Mary Jo Larson and Steve Wenner. And I picked Steve just because he's working on aggregation and that's gonna be a two-year project, um
So, motion made, and second, any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, nay, that's unanimous, Tracy? Now, we just took two, one year
Yeah, and two one-year appointments, I
Can't figure that out, who those would be, we're in trouble.
I move that we appoint Bill Fusco and Michael Schmidt.
Second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, nay, that's unanimous, Tracy? You now have a full board, your board, why don't, actually, since it's new, why don't you work this for half a year or so and then come back to us whether you wanna think about be organizing for Because we did, as Diane said, just do this, let's see how this works. And then, six months and a half or so, we can look at whether we wanna restructure different
Before we have, when we send a meeting, when we do meeting requests, do we, should we let you know that we're having a meeting August, September, October, November?
No, well, I mean, you, you set your meetings and you just publish them and
No, but if anybody here wanna be notified
It's always nice to include the selectmen.
Yeah, sure, I wanna know.
Come visit.
Me too.
You can also set up a website to let you know
All we have to do is hit delete if we don't wanna read it.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Yes, you can, and Mary Jo has one final question.
I have a question, so basically, this is a reconstituted committee, would I be correct in assuming that you're going to vote for the chairperson, vice chairperson, and secretary of the reconstituted? First meeting, okay, so I'll be in touch with you about the protocol.
Yeah, and just, just do note that the protocol on all of these, you'll get appointment letters soon.
Yes.
You can't convene and have, you know, a proper meeting and vote until everybody's been accepted the nomination or the appointment and been sworn in.
And those, and those positions are annual, right? So they do a chair, you, you elect your board every year, so you wanna make sure it's done that way, because we like to have it that, you know.
So there's a possibility of changing that all around, you know.
Amongst yourselves.
Amongst yourselves.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, thank you all for keeping the work, welcome back, Pat.
Nice try, Pat.
That's what happens when you show up.
Tell us what you can do. Excellent, okay, so the next one here would be Cable Advisory Committee, and what do you have, the, excuse me, go ahead.
I have Nicole, so Nicole, so you signed up as Nicole Roth? Oh, that's right, I keep Sorry, I have, I keep thinking of you as Nicole Grabby, but you're not, you are.
It's been Roth for some time.
She is, she always will be, that's who I'm talking to.
And then David Bigley are both up for reappointment. I, I'm actively recruiting, as others have, I actually met with a, I helped a live wire, if you remember, there was a young couple that, that moved into town a year ago, they came. Dusty, the wife, is on Open Space, I tried to recruit John Michael, the husband, so he's actually meeting with Don Royne this week.
Oh, great, because they were
They're very excited, they just had a baby daughter, by the way.
Oh, fabulous.
Uh, but they just came to Earth Day and everything, so
Good, good.
So I, I did meet with him and he and Don are connected, so he might be at the next meeting.
Good recruiting activity.
Good work.
I'd have asked Carrie, I, to see if she could grab anyone that she knows in the, particularly in the, you know, communications world. So, we're, we're trying to get to five.
And I've met somebody that's supposed to be submitting an application from telecom world, so
And I've also been meeting with Nicole and with Don to talk to Don Royne about maybe changing the structure a little bit, to move some of the, potentially move some of the administrative work on the town office as well, keeping the programming, you know, advised by a active committee. Because one of its challenges to this has been, because it's set up as an independent corporation, the volunteers are being asked to do some fairly heavy lifting. You know, make, you know, hiring bookkeepers and managing payments and stuff like that, which can be a lot to ask of folks who are volunteering their time.
You're right, it's no problem.
Yeah, so, but that, is that a good segue to you?
It is, I'm Nicole Grabner, I live on Beachwood Street, I'm sorry
Nicole Roth.
Thank you. I have been the chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee here for the last two years. Um, I am asking to also continue and stay on for the next year. Well, um, and I just wanna share with you that our goals of the Cable Advisory Committee partially are regulated by some SEC with grant money that we get from cable providers. So number one mission is that there is a separate entity that manages the funds that come through from the cable providers for the public access stations. Um, second mission of ours is to manage or help support, support our program director that manages all the hardware, the technology and the public access programming, which is, you know, as you guys know, which is government education and our community. And also, third is to promote and ensure that all of our, our community has access to the public access station, our technology and our equipment, and to create content for that. So those are our main objectives of, just so you guys are all aware. Now, there are things that have changed, like such as social media is, is changing and our video on demand and live streaming, and those are issues that we'll address. As you guys know, we passed, you guys, one of your first things we passed was our cable
Yep.
Provider contract, you know, with Comcast, which is in effect, Verizon is coming. And we, I'm waiting to hear the latest and greatest from that, hopefully in the next month, as to if we get a first draft to review. We'll be proving up by November, of course.
And that's strictly cable, there are relationship with Verizon.
Verizon, cable, yep. And which is, as you guys know, that our grant money comes from a percentage of the fee of, um, the cable bills for cable only. Entertainment, internet is actually separately billed. Um, we don't get any revenues from that, that's all it goes directly to the cable provider and that's how we make money.
What, are there any challenges that, that we could help you to make your mission more successful?
Um, well, one of the things I think that I was striving for was really trying to review all of our contracts that we have under our corporation. What, the contract we have with the town, our policies and procedures, make sure that people are meeting our standards, that they're following our policy procedures. Like people need four checks to be on our community because our, our, our station is in the high school and we're around children all the time. So that's, like, so those are the things that we're just, I'm just making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, we're, we're meeting our contractual obligations with the town. As a result, I have discovered a few things where I felt we could improve on, which is being more transparent with the town about how we're spending our money. Making sure that we're getting our budgets up and our forecasts out to the board selectmen, to present it to you guys to know how we're spending our money. Um, I'd like to have a little bit more interaction and approval, so that, you know, you guys know where this one is going, who is benefiting our town.
Well, we have a informational, um, challenge because our, the Mariner is no longer the newspaper that it used to be. And a lot of the information that the town residents want to, used to get from the Mariner is not necessarily as available.
Right.
Um, I, nothing against the Mariner, they have their challenges, Facebook is lots of fun. But have, have you considered whether that is a need that you might be able to address to
Absolutely, and Chris has actually even talked to Don Royne about that, our program manager, about developing more content. And, you know, he is great at what he does and his whole experience is managing the technology and keeping the station running, keeping the contact and the edit, you know, editing all the content from all of our, you know, public, all our meetings and, um, we need more bodies to help create contact, contact. We historically used interns and students and people who volunteered and stepped up to, whether, video, certain programming and certain events in town and sports teams and games and traveled with them. And we're definitely moving forward, we, we're gonna be full functioning this year with two smooth sports cameras at the high school. Um, there's one on the football field that will be having a little more footage, um, on, on the, on the football field for the types of games and sporting activities.
Okay, just, speaking just for myself, I would welcome input as to what the, the board could help you to facilitate your mission.
So, that's, and then, so what I'd like to do is, you know, now that we can clean up all these administrative things, I wanna be able to focus on, like more of the content side and be a little more creative of programming and maybe engage Carrie, who, you know, and love me to come out and, you know, attend our meetings if you could and give us those ideas. Um, I know Hingham recently started a paper and, you know, we're out without the Mariner and so we do have to pick up a little slack on promoting more of the things around town. And so maybe the news or doing a recap, so there's definitely lots of opportunities to make And I would love to chat with you more about that and maybe bring in more social media, possible live streaming, maybe getting you some of my student interns, let's talk. I would love to come to the next meeting.
Great.
Yeah, definitely, I wanna get specialized interns this year that focus only on social media, that focus on sports, that focus on, you know, certain, you know
It's a great career path.
It is, we had very, numbers are successful.
I think, particularly, since, you know, Carrie does have that skills there, you could make sure, actually she's cabbied on all of your agendas and stuff.
Definitely.
Almost as though she was the liaison, you know, appointed, yeah, but why don't you include her on everything, on your
Yeah.
Or as bonus and invited to all your meetings, okay? Because she's our resource for that, too.
My, my objective is to have another meeting in the next, you know, few weeks and then resume early September. Um, I'd love for you to come out and talk to, you know, us at our next meeting and I'll definitely send you email tomorrow.
Get a lot of stuff to be done, yeah, good.
Because we need to start documenting strategy and content and how we're going to do these things in order of that, so
Oh, we got experts, yeah, experts, oh.
Yeah, but I think everything else is, um, is working itself out, I think.
Yeah, Diane?
Yeah, just a couple of questions on structure, so the cable, there are two committees, am I right about that?
Well, there's a committee and a board of directors. There, there's a committee, which is the Cable Advisory Committee, which looks at the contract and all of that.
And that's a, that's a committee of five.
Correct, and then it's the board of directors of ca, of 143 TV, which the board also owns, which serve the term. So the problem is that, it turns out, after going back through this, the board has not been, we have not been pointing towards that company 143 directors. So people continue to serve until they don't, um, so we, we need to get that all real cleaned.
So, and to, to partially to, um, answer Jack's query, which is, I mean, one of the things we can do is get a full committee, because if, if the committee is prescribed to be five members, they don't have a quorum unless there's three.
Right.
Right now, you're, you, you've put in for reappointment and David Bigley has put in for reappointment, that's two, you can't even meet.
Well, no, no, so Rick is a holdover, Rick Schiffman is still on the committee until he leaves.
Okay.
I believe Carrie has never officially resigned.
She sent me a note, but she does, she's gotta send one to you.
Well, that's not enough. Right, so technically, technically there's still four appointments, yeah, so at least, and Rick is still active, so he's not looking to, he's not seeking reappointment, but until the board replaces him, he's a holdover.
Okay.
So they can still function until we get another member.
Okay.
And he's, I did meet with him, by the way, just to, and he is, he is looking to retire from his service. That said, he's also, wants to make sure that the baton gets passed properly, so.
So, the question is, do we, I mean
I'm hoping by the next meeting, we'll be able to get you
Appoint a full board?
Yes, or, or at least get another one or two new members, which I guess you're for.
I also think that once, because it needs to take a new form along with what Jack was saying, in terms of being more active in the community and doing things that are relevant that we need now. Once that activity gets going, you, you'll, you'll start to attract more people who wanna be part of it.
Exactly.
That's, my guess is what's gonna happen, so let's, let's all get behind it and, you know, try to, so we'll get, that's what I like, because this is a very leading-edge, contemporary, very interesting topic and people just aren't aware of it. So I feel very confident you'll get populated when you do.
Yeah, and I think that, I think not only the two layers, but we never really met separately as a board of 143 TV, no one really meets separately, they just sort of like, um, see what Don's needs are
Some of the subside.
And then improve those kind of needs expenses or, or whatnot. And so we do have to define a line of where, you know, CCTV has a contract with the town versus, you know, our cable committee, you know, where the town of Cohasset has their responsibilities as a board and, um, do we keep the 143 TV board, I mean, it's been absorbed up to one umbrella in one, one meeting. And you guys feel that we should separate that, um, if it's necessary?
I think it's prescribed to be separated, which is the reason I asked it.
Yeah, we need to rebuild it.
Right, and I do think it's important, I mean, the Cable Advisory Committee is the most important thing, right, to get that fully subscribed. And I, I definitely just, and this goes for every committee, if people are looking to get off a committee, they really do need to formally resign. I mean, technically the term ended on June 30th, but, you know, with people that are holding over for the sake of a quorum because it's not a full board, they do need to resign officially with the clerk, because otherwise that's really hamstringing your ability to meet, you know, depending on, you know, their engagement at this point or not, so.
And then, um, and then the only other question was, is that in the meantime, I was trying to make sure that there was transparency on the financials and get that audit done. And I have, I've said, I've received email that this will be done, however, I didn't get clarification if it will be done from 2002 to Carrie. And, um, the second thing is the idea of making sure that there's more transparency with our accounting books and getting a second sign on books on the bank account.
There, there's things that Don, I've talked to Don Paine, our friend at Starbuck, about what we do, but then as well, we'll try to get some of this together. Paris Sullivan, the town's owner, did the audit last time, and it, it's, it's a different kind of audit, it's a smaller operation, but they do pursue it to the board's request for, uh, to do a three-year
Well, I think we're supposed to, from my memory, we're supposed to do an audit to this every several years, so we're doing, do one here, so
Yeah, it's three.
Three, four, yeah, I've been trying to get this done for two years.
It's time.
So let's get it done, yeah, I take it that way.
I, no, it's out of my, out of my control, I've tried getting that done.
We're, we're, well, I'm working with the
No, actually, it's our, it's our responsibility to do that, so you're on, you're gonna do that, Chris, so you're on
Yeah, yeah.
We're all working with them to get this together, we'll get it, we'll get it done.
So when you have that, we'll review it.
Yeah, yeah. And what about the idea of having two sign-on on the bank accounts?
We can work through all that, some of those things have to be passed, yeah, it makes a lot, it makes good sense.
Are you looking into what
No, no, we, let's just, let's talk about this offline, so
Okay, great, I'm looking
So, so are we in the, do, do we wanna make the two reappointments that we have applications for that they've expressed
Yeah, I think so, yeah, we need to be, yeah. And yeah, for two-year periods of time, is that, one year, one year period, okay, all right, so we can do both at the same time, unless there's an inefficiency I'm missing?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, come back.
So, you wanna do it?
You go.
All right, I, I move that we appoint for a one-year term to the Cable Advisory Committee, Nicole Roth and David Bigley.
Second.
Any discussion, no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, known, that's unanimous, Tracy, congratulations, that's two, and thank you very much for what you've done and tonight.
So, I, I know it's out of order, do you wanna take this, um, last minute application?
Yes.
Out of order, Jim.
So, do we need to have a motion? What we've got here is essentially this has come up unanticipated, is it? So, can we, can we have a motion? What we have here, you know, there's-
We can actually remove the, uh, topics that are recently suspended, chairman, forty hours in advance, present time, to discuss the application of one day liquor license for Fresh Feast for a one-a-resident for the Situa Animal Shelter, Thursday, seven twenty-five, two thousand nineteen, six to eight.
Give me a second.
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 Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, that's unanimous. And we'll now consider this application from Fresh Feast. Is there someone here to speak about this issue?
Aye.
If you come on, and off, and make your speech.
Thank you for, um, doing this in short time, too. I know we got to to really late.
Introduce. Yeah.
We are just gonna do a little, we wanna do a little impromptu, uh, twenty-four person event on our deck where people can come with their dogs and, you know, buy a ticket. Um, that all the proceeds will go to the Situa Animal Shelter. We're gonna offer appetizers and live music and we wanna offer, you know, some cocktail donate, cocktails, wine and beer donated by Valen Vine and, uh, Snail Wagon.
Okay. I think there's a volunteer that goes, I saw that one.
Yeah. He's excited.
Yeah.
Come on, buddy.
Great, I watch it go.
Um, Julia, have you done this before? This is, this is the first time on it?
No, this is my first one. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And, uh, um.
But I am, uh, tip certified, so I also, you know, have that as well.
So who will be serving the wine and beer? Then you, you will be and me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, any questions to the board?
Is the, how are you making money? Or are you, you're, I presume you're selling either access to the pet, to the porch or the drinks themselves?
Selling tickets.
Okay.
So there's, um, tickets, some of them right, they're twenty-five bucks each and, um, everything has been donated, so everything we make is gonna go directly to the animal shelter.
And you're limiting this to no more than twenty-four people?
Yeah, I, I can't have that many people on my deck, especially with dogs and storms. I wanted to do eighteen, but we were like, oh, we're gonna raise money, so it's.
Okay, what, what was, what is the address?
One oh five Ripley Road, Fresh Feast. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
I suppose if, if we do make a motion, I suppose we should make the motion limiting it to twenty-four, or is that relevant? I think it would be.
Yeah.
As per the, yeah.
Cause it's a small account.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The application.
I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that, um, unless anybody is, has, that we, uh, grant a one-day liquor license for Julia Linsky. I think that's a doing business as the Fresh Feast, um, at one oh five Ripley Road for beer and wine for twenty-four people and pets.
Date and time?
And the date and time?
Oh, date is, um, Thursday, uh, July twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen in Cohasset.
Sixteen.
And the time?
Sixteen.
PM.
PM.
Second.
Slow run, vegetable time. That was better than the last one. It's like second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for doing this, Chairman. And the community really likes it. And the dogs are going.
Aye.
Of course.
He's all we've got.
Oh, what can I do, um, if I, somebody had mentioned that maybe I could get the, um, the fifty-dollar, uh, fee back simply to charitable, charitable, you know, should, do you know what I do to?
Well, we have to vote on it.
We need to vote on it.
Oh, okay. So I, I, do I like fill out paperwork and come back or?
I move that we waive the fifty-dollar, um, um, special one-day liquor license application thing.
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no.
Aye.
That's all right.
I don't think you need to do anything.
That's one oh five Ripley Road for sixteen.
Good luck.
Thank you, Julia.
Come on down.
Yeah, that sounds nice. Okay, that's not bad. So, that brings us to general discussion, town council. We're right on time, exactly.
Perfect.
Oh, really? Apologize for being a little late from the, we do schedule the twenty minutes of work.
Hmm, that's all right.
Mm, good for you.
So, uh, let me just sort of, sort of frame this one too. Um, what we have, uh, uh, Jim, um, is, is, okay, we're looking at the town council position, which we really haven't done in a number of years, but often I've talked about it, so. We're looking at the position and to, and, uh, to decide, you know, whether we wanna do an RFP or whether we can make any changes or we wanna have a different structure or whatever. So in going through this process, because, and I probably don't need to convince you of this, because the town council position is so key, it's a very important position. It's also a direct responsibility of the board of selectmen to do the hiring. Um, that we thought that the, a good way to do this is, is to have a thorough discussion with some experts on this. And the main purpose of what we wanna have in these discussions, like with you tonight, is for us to be educated, um, as much as we can. And for us as also, we want the public to see the dialogue and if there wasn't for us, they might have been writing up about it. So, it, it can be some community engagement on this very important function and one of our roles and exactly what goes on in this area, cause it can be one of mystery. So that's, that's the whole purpose of what we're doing. And you have the second of our panel of star guests, so, uh, and, you know, we attracted you, cause obviously we know you're very pleased with the work that you have. And you also have been the author of publications, which we all have had a chance to review.
No, no quiz on the, uh, material tonight.
Phew.
Pressure's on.
But, uh, thank you very much for having me in here. I'm very happy to, to help with this discussion. Uh, I wanna make it very clear, especially since televised and whatnot, that I am not seeking or interested in becoming town council in, in, uh, Cohasset. Um, you know, I'm happy where I am. I'm happy doing special council. In fact, continues fine. If it doesn't, I'm, 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 I'm fine with that too. Uh, I just don't want anyone to think that I'm here trying to solicit myself or, that I'm, uh, worked with you folks for a number of years, so I'm very happy to have this opportunity to talk about this, uh, in, in this manner. Um, it might, as you know, the primarily work I do is municipal, uh, work, um, and so I deal a lot with communities and, and their use of town council. And from my, uh, work as the executive director of the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, oftentimes I receive calls, especially around town meeting time, budget time, where they're asking questions about, uh, legal services, how do different communities do it, uh, that, that type of, of thing. So, wh- what I'd like to start off by saying is that, uh, town council in, in, in my view is a, a key part of the town's management team. And you, you folks are like the board of directors, uh, you have a, a town manager, uh, who's sort of like the, the president in a sense that he carries out the directives of the, of the board of selectmen or the board of directors. And he has many, uh, key department heads that work with him, uh, finance, the inspections, uh, treasurer, collector, the, the town accountant, uh, police chief, fire chief, et cetera. And I've, uh, come to realize, uh, over the years that town council should be viewed as part of that key management team. Because everyone has their expertise in different areas, the finance, the police, the fire, building, et, et cetera, uh, but they all have legal components. And quite often, uh, legal issues come up and quite often, people don't realize that there are legal issues with, uh, a topic or a matter that they're about to engage in. And, uh, it's, it's important to have, in my opinion, that the town council, uh, involved in, in those discussions and to serve as a, a, a key subordinate of the board and of the town manager. So oftentimes people say, well, what does, what does a town council do? Well, you know, basically it's the, this is a mu- a municipal corporation. The town of Cohasset is a corporation. And, um, the town council is the legal advisor, uh, and rep- legal representative of that corporation. So if you look at it the same way you've been looking at a regular for-profit corporation and their, uh, general counsel or whatever they call them, uh, you know, that person, uh, is involved in drafting contracts, writing opinions and interpretations of the law, uh, to guide and work with all the different boards and officials within the town. Uh, legal representation in matters, uh, which includes litigation, uh, as well as, um, at meetings and, and, and other things. We, we all wanna avoid litigation. Lawyers also wanna avoid litigation and by having proper involvement with your town council in different matters, I believe, leads to less litigation. Doesn't eliminate litigation, because sometimes the town may wanna be the party initiating the litigation or doesn't stop other people from making claims or appealing decisions. It's all part of the legal process. But your attorney, you know, can help you do that. Drafting of documents, licenses, decisions of the board, uh, memos, policies, uh, things of that nature. Uh, your, your town council would be heavily involved in, uh, human resources. Uh, I understand you do have a, a human resource person, which, which is great. Uh, but the town council would be a, a, a resource to that person in terms of that person carrying out their functions as director of human resources. Uh, policy development, uh, is also another key area that the municipal council gets involved in, uh, because they have access to policies that already may have been written on whatever you're trying to develop a policy on. And not that you should necessarily just rubber stamp and adopt another policy, but they can come up with language and ideas that should be considered in any policy that, that's being developed. Um, property issues, uh, you know, rights of, in, in property, the town's use of property, uh, streets and ways, uh, zoning and land use. So, tho- those are just a, a broad, you know, category of, of description of things that the town council gets, gets involved in. Uh, you know, what's in a name, you know, uh, Shakespeare, I think it's written, you know, a rose by another name is still a rose. Well, it doesn't really matter what, you know, the title of, of the attorney is. But generally in Massachusetts, for towns, the position is called town council. For cities, it's called city solicitor. In some cities, uh, such as Boston, uh, they go by the title of corporation council. Uh, um, other communities, uh, they may call them the general council, uh, uh, town solicitor. Uh, Weymouth, the title is called town solicitor. It used to be called town council. Then they switched to a council form of government. So I think they wanted to get away from calling their attorney the town council because it would be too confusing with the other town council, the legis-, you know, the, the body that, that, uh, uh, that you folks basically serve in.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's all whatever you call in, in, in your, in your charter. Uh, appointments of, of town council, uh, are typically done by the board of selectmen, uh, in a town and, and in a city, it, uh, maybe by the city manager or by the mayor. Uh, in some towns, it's done by the town manager. In some towns, it's done by the town manager with the approval of a ratification by, uh, the board of selectmen. Um, it all comes down to what's in your charter and in, and in your charter, section thirty dash thirty-four, as you noted it before, it is the board of selectmen that, uh, is the appointing authority. And, and, and that's not, uh, un- unusual. Um, so different models of how the coun- how the town council, by whatever name he's ca- he or she is called, uh, comes into being. Well, you, you can hire an individual and that individual could be a regular employee of the town. Uh, several towns do that type of, of arrangement. Um, one of the things that you have to consider if you're going to be thinking about doing it that way is you have to have a place for that person to work. Typically, they would need some staff or share some staff, uh, but in, in some communities, they have someone on a full-time basis or on a part-time basis, uh, being the in-house legal counsel. Uh, and, and even if it's not a full-time basis, it, it oftentimes expands beyond just a, a part-time thing, cause it's very hard to say to the court, to a judge, uh, well, I'm sorry, your honor, I only work nine to two, uh, so I, I can't come to court at two o'clock for a hearing or something. It's, it's the nature of, of the job. Uh, sometimes you have, in larger communities, you may have someone who works full-time and that's exclusively what they do is the attorney, uh, for that, uh, town. Sometimes you will hire, uh, an attorney as your town council, uh, who may be a local practitioner. Um, obviously, they have to be sensitive to conflict of interest situations, they, uh, to get involved in representing private parties and matters that that person has. You know, they have s- uh, a relationship or an issue with the town, uh, and vice versa. If the town says to their attorney, well, we have this issue with so-and-so, uh, wh- what should we be doing? That, but that's, that's easily addressed as long as people u- understand it. Cohasset years ago used to have, uh, a law firm in Cohasset, uh, I think the fellow's name initially was Blake Baxter, who was the town, longtime town council here, very highly regarded, respected fellow. And, uh, his associate and eventually I think he became his partner was Richard Henderson, who was probably someone well familiar to all of you. And, uh, Richard was the town council, uh, for, for many years here and, and, uh, had then, still has now, an excellent, you know, reputation as an attorney, uh, particularly in real estate, land use, uh, local government, uh, law. It's, it's convenient having a local attorney in, in some models. There's no one model that fits everything. I'm just gonna like describe several different scenarios. But having a, a local attorney, uh, w- works well in, in that when there's something that he needs to come over and meet, uh, with the manager or meet with the board or a department head or they need to go and meet with him, it's ver- it's very close, uh, very short on travel time. Uh, the local attorney may be very fami- familiar with the local issues. The, the town council, he's a, he or she is a local person, you know, should really be avoiding any political involvement, um, because it doesn't mix well. Uh, but that, that, that is one model that many communities have. They have a, a local, uh, a, attorney. Some communities don't wanna have a local attorney because they feel that, well, they're, they're, they're too involved with too many different things or too many different people in the community. So in, in those communities, they may be looking for a, a, a lawyer whose office is outside of the town. Um, there's no, again, right or wrong, uh, way. It's, it's how you think it will work best for your community. But it, it, it should be, in my opinion, something that you look at, whoever it is, someone that, that works well with the local government and is, you know, e- uh, accessible. Uh, nowadays, especially with the train, the boat that goes to Hingham, et cetera, Boston is fairly accessible. You can get back and forth in Boston quicker sometimes than you can going from here to, to Grandtree or, or Quincy. Uh, so you, you also may wanna look at a firm that has more than one attorney, not a sole practitioner, but some, a, a firm or, or a law office that has a, a couple of attorneys. Uh, that model also works well. Uh, sometimes they may be paid a stipend, uh, for a certain described scope of work and paid additional, uh, for, for example, they have litigation. Uh, cause litigation is very hard to estimate how much time an attorney is gonna have to spend, uh, on litigation ma- uh, related matters. So some communities, they may have a stipend for the attorney, uh, that covers everything, or it may be a stipend that, uh, covers everything but litigation. So all the drafting of contracts, attending meetings, giving opinions, uh, representing, uh, the, the town at, at different, uh, events or, or meetings. Um, that would all be included in, in the stipend. Some communities treat that person as a salary and have that person as a salaried, uh, em- employee. In some instances, uh, there may be a, a, a larger firm than a small firm. What's a larger firm, small, uh, bigger than a small firm? When I say small firm, I'm, I'm saying like, you know, three to six attorneys, but there are larger firms that, that have, uh, and I won't use names, but you use right now, uh, one of your, uh, attorneys, uh, is a, a, a li- a large, a large firm by, outside of Boston standards, uh,
Yeah.
you know, and they're located in, in Quincy, uh, and they have, uh, a- attorneys that, you know, they're large enough that they ha- they have attorneys that work primarily on different areas, different topics, uh, which they develop an expertise in, but they also have a, a good overall exposure. which they develop an expertise in, but they also have a good overall exposure and knowledge of municipal law so that they can work on any municipal law matter. Some of them sometimes tend to specialize in a certain area, litigation, zoning, land use, tax collection, tax title work, contracts, environmental work, things of that nature. I think, and so one model is that you may have attorneys who do multiple tasks, but you have one attorney who, for example, is the town council, and that person sort of coordinates and oversees what the other people are doing. Or some people may say, well, doesn't that lead to duplication? You know, we'll be paying two attorneys to be to be doing something when one would be necessary. But I I I think it's a, just a good way of business to have one person that oversees things and is responsible. And that person will know what the others are doing so that, in my opinion, there's better coordination so that you don't have a situation where, you know, the other people don't know what the others are working on. So in that sense, I think it's helpful to have one person like the captain, and they have the team members. That's that's an approach. There are certainly a wide variety of firms that that have, that are very competent in municipal law. Years ago, municipal law was, you know, just like an area, you know, just like, wasn't like a recognized specialty, so to speak. Now, now, over the years, it has become that, and, you know, I'm familiar with all the attorneys that that you use, and they're all excellent, very skilled, very highly regarded practitioners of municipal law. So, you know, in other firms or in other scenarios, they may have different law firms that handle different things. And to some degree, you do that here, I believe. Labor, for example, is is handled by a firm that specializes in public sector labor law. And, you know, that model also works well. In some communities, they have someone that does the labor, someone that does real estate and land use, someone who does the litigation, the general litigation. And one community that I know of that has that type of model, they also have another attorney who is the officially designated town council. And he's, you know, all those other attorneys are in separate practices, but the town council sort of coordinates, oversees what they're doing, and also is responsible to the board for the multitude of things that come up that don't fall within just a real estate matter, don't fall within a litigation matter or a labor matter, opinions and interpretations, contract drafting on on different things. So there's there's a variety of of models, and I know it can be like, well, what's the best one that we that we should have? There really isn't, you know, the best one. From time to time, you know, the community may have to hire, even if they have a town council who is very competent and knows a lot of different areas, you may find the necessity to also hire special counsel, special outside counsel. And whenever I've, and I've done this type of discussion with other, you know, boards of selectmen around the state, you know, from our association, and sometimes they'll say, well, if we ha- you know, what do we need a town council for? If we have to hire a special counsel for this and a special counsel for that. Well, usually you don't have to hire that many special counsels, but you need your town council to tell you when you need to hire the special counsel. It's just like, use the analogy of a corporation. You know, the the legal department in a corporation is, you know, presumably very competent in terms of corporate business law, stock, things like that, but they recognize that sometimes you need to bring in a specialist either because of workload demands or because it's a particular area that there was people who concentrate just in that area. Sometimes like environmental law is an area of that nature, or regulatory issues, telecommunications, cable licensing, things that your town council would know about, know many aspects of it, but, you know, when you're dealing with a large Verizon, Comcast, or some other large international company that has, you know, teams of lawyers, you know, sometimes you may wanna have a special counsel dealing with those matters. But you would have, in my opinion, you would have your town council work with them or at least be the liaison between that attorney and the town. And another, in my opinion, beneficial reason to have that type of a relationship is your town council presumably would know the ins and outs of the local government here. Whether they represent just this town or other towns, they would know more of the lay of the land than than a special counsel coming in for one particular case. And that interaction and that ability of your municipal council to tell the special counsel certain things that they would not otherwise know just because they don't have that ongoing relationship, you know, with the town. You're also particularly fortunate here in that your your town manager is also a lawyer. And I know he knows not to, not to act as the town council. But, you know, that's very helpful, having someone that knows the legal system, knows the laws, knows what you can do. And that, all of that leads to saving on legal costs, minimizing claims. Sometimes you have no control over claims, as I'm sure you've all seen, that, you know, for two hundred and seventy-five dollars, anyone can file a complaint in Superior Court. And then then you're you're on the on the race, so to speak. So, and also you gotta remember that some boards have statutory authority to hire their own legal counsel. School committee has authority to hire a legal counsel. Assessors have authority to hire a legal counsel. Sometimes they use the town council, sometimes they, you know, hire their own counsel. Special education is another one of those areas that is very technical, and many communities will have a special counsel for special education cases because they're, it's a very unique area. So I've done a lot of talk and giving you my perspective of the overview and some of the different models. I'm happy to answer any questions and give you any additional information.
President Thurlold, which is something I would really wanted. Any questions or comments?
I got a list. So one of the first things I think we probably eventually have to talk about is whether we should change our bylaw. Because our bylaw is very specific about how, well, it's not very specific, but it's a framework that I don't think we're actually using right now. And I think we should just put it in the back of our mind that we may wanna look at this. And depending on what we decide is the best option for council, make sure it does or if it doesn't, make some edits to the bylaw at a future town meeting. And just for everybody's edification, I'm sure you all know this, but with special counsel, and we've run into some issues more earlier in my years, but, you know, water, sewer, I mean, those are very specific needs. And they, because they're enterprise funds, they're they're just sort of out of our purview. They're, you know, independently elected boards and enterprise funds, but they they do have to come through us, through the board of selectmen, to make decisions on hiring special counsel.
Excuse me, but the school committee does it though.
The school committee, and it's right here in the bylaw, that everybody other than the school committee.
So they can hire their own counsel for whatever choices and whatever they're interested in.
They have a statute, it's, there's a specific statute about school committees.
Yeah, I just wanna be mindful that as we develop whatever the right model is for Cohasset, that we make sure we make whatever corrections we need to in our bylaws. And then one of the things that you were talking about is where there's a town with their town council who helps. I always try to make the doctor analogy, right? It's like your general practitioner, and while you get a heart murmur, you go see Doctor Schubert or somebody more qualified, or.
Nobody's more qualified.
I know, I'm just kidding. You know, and 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 my question is, are there lawyers within their own firms, big or small, that that will send you to various other law firms? Because I find that, like, sort of, I don't know, you know, like, right, unusual.
Well, you're probably thinking it sounds counterintuitive that a lawyer is going to refer
They eat what they kill. I know this.
To someone else, you know, outside of their firm, and, you know, I I I don't share that that view that it's so unusual.
That's good.
Lawyers will do that. Ethically, they're supposed to. If for some reason they don't feel that they're competent to to handle something, they're they're supposed to explain that they're not competent to handle something. And that sort of gets into the point that, well, yeah, they could probably handle this, but you'd be better served by having a specialist come in to to handle something. And if that law firm, if you have a large enough law firm that's serving as your town council, quite often there are people in that firm that would have that expertise, and the person that you designate as your town council would know that, well, okay, that that's a very involved issue. Luckily, we have Mary Elizabeth down the hall, and that's what she primarily does. Or, you know, they may they may say, and I've seen this happen, I've been brought in in situations where the the firm, very competent people and everything, but sometimes they wanna have someone from the outside come in to advise them on something or at least review something to give some impartiality to it, or they feel that they they need someone a little bit greater expertise. So, and they may work collaboratively. I called an attorney the other day on a telecommunications matter, and to, behalf of a client, to see if he was interested in coming in and advising that community on this telecommunication issue. And he explained that, well, it's funny you ask that, you know, I'm doing that at another community, but I partnered up with another attorney who also had, you know, a great deal of experience and expertise. So attorneys do do that.
In my own experience, if I may, just, I I served earlier in my career as a member of a municipal team in a much bigger town, and the breadth that you have to cover, it's like being a general practitioner, right? But the the specifics, as Jim was pointing out, have gotten really weird. I mean, like zoning, if you don't practice zoning every day, it's like, you know, playing football and going to play baseball. I mean, it's it's not the same at all. So there are areas, and very common ones, that you really need to have some expertise in. And everyone just can't do both things. I mean, you wanna have someone who understands, it's kinda like being a town manager, right? You have to know that it's an issue. I mean, I can't go fix the water plant, but I know that some of the issues that are there. So you have to be able to identify what the issue is, and I think that's that's a really important role that I think the primary council plays, is to help identify, as Jim pointed out, yeah, you need that specialty or whatever.
And what's appropriate for the particular town, yes, correct.
Nowadays, I mean, so many areas of municipal law that that can become almost specialties unto themselves that, you know, oftentimes you look at it and and realize, well, yeah, I understand that. I've done that type of a case before. I handled similar things for the town before. But now there's another level of complexity for some reason. So it's not, you know, and you you don't wanna see, you know, make work for lawyers project, but, you know, sometimes it's it's necessary.
The flip side of courses is to get that answer quickly, I'm sorry, where you're just like, yeah, just look here, boom, done. You wanna have someone that's not familiarity. So you don't have to get a specialist every time either, right? You may need it for Title V, but I don't need it, that's the specific stuff, but not for FOIA, right? Tell me FOIA.
Yeah, there's certainly areas that, you know, your municipal council should be expected to have, you know, intimate grasp of FOIA, you know, public records, conflict of interest, open meeting law. A friend of mine who speaks at a lot of conferences and co-chair a lot of municipal law conferences, he calls it like a three-legged stool. You have the conflict of interest law, you have the public records law, and you have the open meeting law. And it's like a three-legged stool that, you know, are the essent- essential things to keep government moving.
The general counselor has to know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, because those issues come up, almost with all the committees and S House and everything, so I can see that. Jack.
Yeah. By the way, I concur that I think the law has become too complicated that you you do have to have some mechanism for the appropriate times. And I kinda like the idea of having a general counsel as a cheerleader to, or a coordinator. The other thing that has occurred to me is the use of paralegals. I could see a scenario, and I'm not sure whether that would work, where a town would have a paralegal kind of embedded in the local structure who, I know in conservation we would run into issues, where you kinda, you kinda knew it, but you didn't. But you necess- don't necessarily, doesn't rise to where you'd have to call a general counsel, but having somebody there to do that keeps the people from making a foolish mistake because they don't know. And accessibility means you can call somebody right away, which, and get an answer right away. And I don't know whether that model can be incorporated or whether that makes sense at all.
Well, there are, you know, paralegals, you know, are very valuable in the legal industry, in the legal field. There are some communities that make direct use of paralegals. Town of Weymouth, for example, they went to an in-house, they had a, prior to the current arrangement, they had a longtime town council who then became the town attorney when they changed the former government. He was a local practitioner, and, you know, he was readily available to the town. You know, he was just down the street, he'd be there every day. And, you know, when they switched from that model to someone who worked in-house just for the town, they had, there was a paralegal from the other attorney. The town evolved, Weymouth, you know, is a larger community. And even with this other attorney who was, you know, very knowledgeable and skilled and local, at some point in time, the town hired a paralegal to work with with him, even though he worked, his office was outside of town hall, although he would use a conference room when he was in town hall. But they they hired a paralegal who worked, you know, eventually full-time for the town, and she would work a lot with the with the town council on different things. Then when they moved to a an in-house attorney, to be distinguished from an outhouse attorney, that's sometimes what they call it. They, you know, the paralegal stayed there, and she's now the paralegal for the in-house town solicitor. And I worked with her, and she does a very good job. The town attorney can work with her, tell her, okay, well, this is what we need. We have discovery on this case. We need to get, you know, these doctors. We need to work up draft answers to this. The paralegal should be under the supervision of an attorney.
Yes, right.
Braintree also had a, years ago, I don't know if they still do now, they they have a an attorney who's the town council. He had an office in the town, but he also had, he was a specialist in patents and copyrights, which were a different thing. Maybe that helped him keep his sanity from the municipal stuff. They also had a full-time paralegal who eventually became a lawyer in in there who kept paperwork going on a day-to-day basis, and it does keep costs down.
That was the other thing. Keep costs down, efficiency up. And also, when you're in the, from my experience with conservation, you're hesitant to call an attorney knowing it's gonna be a billable event for the town, so you might be thinking twice. With a paralegal, you might get that little piece of wisdom which would save the town some money, and you'd be more likely to use it. But again, I don't know, but I think it may.
Fit discussions.
Yeah, there is, the the that can work, and hopefully it does work. But sometimes, you know, the paralegal may not know recent changes in the law, may not know that the day before a case came down, that completely changed, you know, what the understanding of the law was, was on a subject of, so.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, so a couple of things. Looking at the
Yeah, so a couple of things, um, looking at the, like, the type of town council, are there comparable-sized municipalities that have a similar
Mm-hmm.
pattern, I I guess is what I'm looking at. Is there, you know, only town council, or is it town council with modification for special council, or is it in-house? You know, are there towns our size that have an in-house council?
Um,
Whether they're salaried or retained?
Yeah, wh- what, I mean, what the population is of Colhasset?
That's some.
Eight thousand.
Yeah, yeah, I I don't think there were many towns that have a, uh, full-time in-house dedicated, uh, town council in in that size. Uh, they may have an attorney who is, uh, an employee of the town, or is on a stipend from the town, uh, who's readily a- available, but for an in-house operation, um,
You don't figure out.
usually it's, usually it's a little bigger, but I I I know a cou- a couple of towns in the north of Boston where they did have an an attorney, and they 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 weren't eight thousand, they were in the ten to twenty thousand dollar range, and they had an a- an attorney who worked, you know, out of town hall, uh,
Yeah.
and who was was their attorney.
Yeah, and along those lines where, you know, the times I've dealt with the kind of lawyers at work where when we had a business before we sold, we had an in-house, I should say, we had a contracted in-house person. But stuff like OSHA or, uh, employment and discrimination law, that, it went through that, you know, the practice, but they outsourced that on those two particular, uh, points.
Yeah.
And then the school committee we had, most was was basically the same law firm, but when it came to, there was a, uh, a finding that this floor stripper stripped the floor too badly and was peeling up the tiles. And so we had someone who could do special education, employment law, and contract law, and and s- school administration law, but had no idea how to litigate, and actually went to the town to litigate the insurance claim for something that was under the purview of this of the school. So, there's a couple of times where, even though there's a relative in-house or a contracted person, that those individual spots came up that were just out of the, out of the ordinary.
Yeah.
Um, so I I was thinking whether or not, it almost fits the way we are doing it now, having kind of a specialty, uh, you know, something that's litigation that may be fine to litigate, but if it's a, I don't know, OSHA or something else, it may go out, I mean, that's what I've seen it from from the town.
Yeah.
I I'm not sure whether, you know, what's the best way to do that, is it to have, you know, a large, you know, council, you know, a large, uh, group, or is it one or two or six, and they can outsource it when they need it?
Yeah. There there there's benefits and detriment and downsides for for all of it. Uh, you you just, the important thing is to have control so that the budget doesn't go haywire. Um, and oftentimes, you know, it's the town manager that's like the gatekeeper on the use of of council. Uh, but you don't wanna discourage, uh, employees or department heads from reaching out to council or coming to the manager and say, hey, you know, I'm dealing with a situation here, I I think we need, we need council now. Uh, you know, oftentimes I gotten called in w- when they're past that point where they should've called somebody beforehand and they went down a path that they thought was right, um, but, you know, they didn't consider certain things. Uh, you know, y- you you do have, for example, like, a l- a lot of litigation and employment matters, you have insurance. Uh, and I I I know you, uh, one of the company, one of the firms that handles your, you know, insurance-assigned work, and and they're they're all, I know several of them, they're all they're all excellent, and that's their their specialty. Uh, but you, you you need to have someone on the local level who can interact, you know, with them, uh, whether it's someone working in town hall or working in another office, uh, to to be able to have, you know, be able to call up and 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 speak to someone like John Davis and 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 say, hey, you know, the town is proceeding in in this direction, um, you know, I think as their attorney that, you know, we may get a claim over this. And you try sometimes to get advice from them so that it's put in the right posture that will be easier to to defend and and, you know, they can steer you in the right direction. In fact, just like D- Diane had mentioned about other committees, you know, hiring, you know, attorneys, I I think of
Special counsel.
Except for those commu- uh, committees that have the statutory authority, I think it's important that to be a s- a central authority that approves the hiring of council, whether it's the town manager, the board of selectmen, or or combination. Uh, I I don't think you wanna encourage or have committees being able to hire a council, because then you're not having like a unified approach on things. And, you know, there's a handful of cases over the years, fewer, about committees that went out and hired their own attorney, and the town says you can't do that.
Right.
Then there's litigation over that.
Right.
And in ninety-nine percent of those cases, the outcome is that, you know,
Yeah.
the committee didn't have the authority to hire a council.
Right, right. And then that's how it is, that's how it is now, and I think one of the other sort of things that as we look at this is, you know, we're all committee members, right? So, you know, we need to make it such that there's a, a, you know, we have, we lay out the actual process for legal advice, you know, cause I remember a time on on this board many years ago where five different people were calling town council up with with a similar question, and I, you know, if somebody said, well, I talked to town council, and they said blah blah blah,
Right, exactly.
and I'm sitting here thinking, well, I talked to town council and they didn't say blah blah blah, so, you know, so it's all part of the structure of this as to how, you know, who's who's that, you know, if one of us needs to talk to an attorney, well, we all should have the benefit of that same advice
Right.
on that same question, and 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 that's, you know, I I don't, I think we're in a really good place, I don't see that happening, but I I think that that is, again, something we need to consider with that that one person, town council, and who is it, do we go to Chris? And if, God forbid, Chris, for whatever reason, wasn't available, or we didn't trust him on this issue or whatever,
Right.
that there's somebody, you know, it's the chair of the board or whatever, but I, all of that, I really wanna try to rein in
Mm-hmm.
as we look at what this town needs and what the best solution is for us, so.
Of course.
Carrie?
On that note, Diane, and I appreciate how thorough and diplomatic you're being in your answers, I was kind of hoping you'd just tell us the best thing we need to do, and then we'd do it, but obviously, I understand it's a lot more nuanced than that, and I appreciate it, but I'm curious, I guess, just, you know, since I'm so new and listening to everyone, and I'd like to hear from Chris and those of you who've been on the board longer, and you too, do we feel like we need something currently that we haven't been getting recently? And also, you know, what do we feel like we need to be doing differently? Cause it does seem like things are pretty well-functioning legally right now, and I appreciate this discussion, but I'm curious, you know, thinking back on the past five, ten, fifteen years, how, what mistakes have we made in this area? And what do we feel like we need to be doing differently, moving along in terms of our representation?
Can I just quickly take one little crack at it from me, and then, I'm sorry, but one of the things that bothers me, and and it's not about council or the structure or anything, but our bylaws say we're supposed to do this annually.
Okay.
And and I'm just a nope about that stuff, and we haven't done this, we have not had this conversation in twenty-four years. Well, we've just adapted to the the times, so, that's all.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, uh, one quick s- story that'll follow up on what Diane said. So, when I started, uh, there was some concern about where we were, and we had one firm.
Yeah.
And 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 I was being a- asked by at least one member, if not two, to 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 go to a different model, and and I talked to my neighbors in Hingham, and which which Jim has primarily referred to as the Hingham model, where they have like, you know, this like mixture of attorneys, and then the town manager, the town told me he was like the magic partner, and I and I'm just starting here, and I'm like, I don't have time to be the magic partner of a law firm. So, it 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 made sense to have a little one firm.
Yeah.
Um, fi- you know, move the clock forward almost six years, that firm doesn't exist anymore. Uh, i- i- and it's broken up, so we're in a different place. And, um, so we've been forced, a year ago when the firm broke up, to to kind of jump into, and we've, you know, we had, we had brought, uh, Jim on for some special counsel work, cause he has some very specialist expertise in certain areas, and knows the locals, so he's done a lot of legal license work and some enforcement work, uh, cause we had some other conflict issues. We had to bring another firm in for a specialty issue, which, uh, Jack is very familiar with, uh,
Many hours of my time.
Uh, and that worked out okay, and we actually, it it got us an introduction to another firm.
Yeah.
That said, it, what makes it timely, apart from the fact that it's something we should do anybody, is that we're just in a different place, and we've we've, we had to kind of put things together last year, cause the 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 primary towns' firm broke up, and they just didn't have the ability to provide certain services to us.
Yeah.
I think it's healthy, I think we're at a point where we really, we have to have this conversation, and I wanna be able to work with the board to get to a place where we're all comfortable, and again, we should have this con- this conversation periodically, it doesn't just have to be, we we re- we throw out the 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 attorneys and bring new ones every year, I don't think that's the case, but we should have a, at least a conversation, are are we okay?
Yeah, review what's going on in this critical function, because we do that review in all the other major departments every year.
Right, yeah. Right.
And as Diane said, it's built into the bylaws to do it, we just haven't, and that's part of the thing that can happen with the mystique in the legal type profession and the relationship that develop, and we've got, so, we do need to set a practice of reviewing how this is going every year as we do all the other departments, so, yeah, I think that's very healthy.
That transparency and looking at it every year is very, very healthy for the relationship.
Yeah.
We get to look, and of course, it's us, and Kevin was a good idea of yours.
Yeah.
It forces us to look at it and understand what we're doing, and it keeps the council on on notice that we are paying attention.
Right. A better educated board of selectmen is is a much better, gets a better result. It also, it's a public dialogue, so the public can keep part of it, so it's all healthy transparency, I agree.
Yeah.
Right.
So, on top of the fact that, you know, the firms change, because people change, and they retire to different firms, and, you know, the we had, our primary labor council went to Harvard, I mean, I I I would, uh, you know, he went to Harvard as an in-house council, he just wasn't, he wanted to do something different. Uh, the primary point person I was dealing with, with the primary town council firm, he went to the DCR, the Division of Conservation Research, and the Assistant General Counsel. Sometimes you lose people you work with. The other is that the town's needs change. I mean, the reality is that, you know, the things that were important five years ago, six years ago are different, we weren't doing any real planning five or six years ago, right?
Right.
So, we have a different set of needs, we were also, we weren't doing enforcement six years ago, so we had some very specific enforcement, and we, and we didn't even have legal rules six years ago, right? So, so we we we've, we, I think it's a point to assess what your needs are at any given point, too, to make sure you have the right representation. And I do agree, I I think it would be helpful to have kind of a point person, I again, I am an attorney, I have a licensed attorney in Massachusetts, I do not service, I'm not town council. I do not service town council, I answer very pointed questions of town council, that's my job, and I can ask questions in a way that that I others might not be able to do in my position, which I think has been helpful. Uh, though it's it's far from perfect, and 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 I'm, up until six years ago, I didn't practice here, so, you know, my my depth of knowledge has developed, but I'm still, Jim knows more, Jim's forgotten more about municipal law than I will ever know. So, uh, so so I think it's important to be able to have these conversations.
I was just saying also that, in terms of changing council, I I don't recommend changing council just for the sake of changing council.
Right.
Because there's, uh, an institutional knowledge that is irreplaceable, whether it's council, managers, department heads, whoever, that, uh, is invaluable. Sometimes people say, well, you know, we we really, uh, hate to use the term, uh, clean house, need fresh blood or something. But you you have no idea, especially with government, how in- important that institutional knowledge is that people have.
Especially the the more educated and knowledgeable the selectmen are, the less there's gonna be a need for that, cause they know what to ask and how to direct better.
Right.
So, um, one of the things on Carrie's question is, and it's one of the uh, that that, uh, interests me is, is that when we end up in this process, that one of the things I do think that we've been lacking is what you said in the, what Jim said at the beginning of his talking, is the idea of having council close, closer by to us to give advice, particularly, you know, before things become problems. And the idea of a of a of a council that, you know, is part of the management team, I do think that's something that we sh- if we could weave that in, that I think is a need that I see. And I and I think it's would be good for the board of selectmen, you know, to to have that too, without incurring huge expenses and so forth. But to have, however we end up with doing this, a council that maybe we just periodically meet with and can bounce our questions and
Sure.
c- and concerns off and on, on basis, maybe we should set that up. Maybe that is something we can do, but just simply setting it up, but we need that closer advisement, we need to bring a council in closer to us that we can feel, that we can ask questions and have a dialogue, that's a real need, I think we need to get done here.
Well, the good news is, um, it's developed with the internet and, uh, portals. My company uses what we call the distributed model, and that really means that I have access to experts all over the country. They might as well be next door. You know, we can share a computer screen, and that, by using that type of model, we get the benefit of somebody next door. They might be just in Boston, and they probably would be in Boston if it were Quincy, but rather than having to set up a meeting, we have to go there, they have to go there. Just go on and.
Well, it's a good idea that we could use technology to cut down on our expenses and also get more legal interaction, because
And save on travel time.
Exactly, and, um, I've seen in in private business and public business, Jim, is everybody knows in well-run entities, council bringing brought in earlier will prevent problems from
Yep.
getting to, uh, before they become in a much more critical and expensive state, so.
Spoken with a true lawyer.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so that's a field, yeah. But it's true, and and there are a lot of town councils, general councils, I have a friend that's a municipal council, and she goes to every selectman's meeting
Right, yeah.
Wow. in a couple of the towns.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we we don't need a town council sitting here every meeting, but there are times that things are heated, or stuff's happening, that somebody should go to every planning board meeting, or every, whatever it is, but that is, again, something that, and and that builds trust too, right?
Yes.
Builds a relationship with with the ed- the board and the council.
And transparency and knowledge.
That what Jack was saying about the technology, the remote participation in meetings, I mean, I know municipal op- firms do that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, e- even my office, which is very small,
Yeah.
we've we've done that on on occasion, uh, you know, and and it's
So, there's something we should look into as a board and work with Chris, is there may be ways that we can set up technology that we use even beyond that to help make things more efficient, but, uh, can I ask you, I wanna can I ask you a question, cause I don't wanna, okay, go on forever on this, which we could, is is, um, the idea of the town council, who are the council for, who 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 really is the client, who are they, are they serving the board of selectmen? Or are they serving the town, or, uh, that that, when we go to make our understanders better, who 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 we're we're hiring, but who are we hiring that council to be for, is it?
You're hiring
You didn't understand the question?
Yeah, that that's a frequent subject of conferences and and reading papers and so forth.
Right.
Uh, you're basically hiring an attorney to represent the organization, the entity. So, be the attorney for the town of Colhasset. However, that person needs some direction, so who is the chief policymaking body in the town of Colhasset? It's the board of selectmen. Who is the chief administrator in the town? It's the town manager. So, the the attorney is supposed to be representing the entire entity, but someone has to say, well, okay, this is gonna be our policy on this, this is the direction that we're going to take on this. Sometimes, you know, I I I hear like residents will say, well, you know, you're supposed to represent me, I'm a citizen here, and, you know, as long as the citizen's direction is aligned with what the town has decided to be the direction, that that works great. But like with any organization, someone has to set the direction, and that that's who they
So, it's really the 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 town that you would be, or the person represents, but by the nature of the entity, you work through the board of selectmen principally as the policy, and the town manager. That's why it can appear as though you're our attorney, but you're not really, you're you're the town's attorney.
That's right.
And that we all may, that's why it's important to understand that role, is cause I know even in my time in the board, sometimes selectmen or other committees think that the board of, think the attorney represents them, and they don't, they 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 need to be looking after what's for the town, but through us.
And if the, and the the nightmare is if it, the attorney sees clearly that the interest of the town is that the chairman of the board of selectmen and the town manager go to jail. Yeah, but but that's, you know, illustrating, but that's
Yeah.
where where you see that, and I don't take that personally.
It's interesting in a
Of course, I'm not.
No, I'm sure, okay, um, so, okay, this is good, anything else on this? Okay, so, uh, this is the n- another one of these things here, and what we're gonna do is I'll set up where uh, our next, our guest will be Paul Drexes, and he may bring him, he's the one that has been working with a lot as attorney.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That'll be on the August twentieth meeting, and, uh, what we're gonna do is go through this educative process, which we're well on on, and then we'll decide amongst ourselves what what we're gonna do, just so you know, in case we come back to hear any advice on what we gotta do, so.
Yeah, I'm happy, I I I think this is, A, you know, I have a good relationship with the town, I'm happy to volunteer to provide Yeah, I, I, happy, I, I, I think this is, A, you know, I have a good relationship with the town, I'm happy to volunteer to provide this discussion and, and my ro- and my role as the executive director of the Municipal Lawyers Association. Uh, you know, I, I try to help communities understand their relationship to town council and help them, 'cause A, A, A is a little bit different in, in things. Uh, and so if you have other, other questions, feel free to call me directly or go through Chris, you know, it's, it's.
Good. Okay, folks, we also, Jim, thank you very much.
Great, thanks Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to have a hearing with you here. Nice to see you in a casual conversation coming away.
Either here or at the MMA.
Yeah.
Exactly, right.
It's actually been pretty pleasant to see you, now that I think about it, I was wondering why I was feeling so relaxed.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Usually he's felt, yeah, something.
Well, we are too, yeah.
And we'll be home before one in the morning.
I'm surprised, there's no audience here tonight, I, it's the sexiest topic on the agenda.
I know, it's July, it's July, we just kinda push through all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
It's leaving a demon in my heart and there's, there's no one here.
Aww, you've got some viewers on TV, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know which was better or worse, I'll leave that alone, but, uh.
Good, nice to see you again.
Okay, thank you.
My Jim, thanks.
See you again.
Thanks, Jim, thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, continuation of the town manager evaluation. I still had mine to do, so I'll finish that up right now, uh, it's, it's, it's just the two pages that I needed to do, I had done the rest of the, uh, uh, review and so forth that was incorporated last week. My own personal one I hadn't done yet, so, uh, and I've given it to Mary, so all I need to do really is sort of read this and, you know, so. If you all remember what you all, what was done last week, I'm now doing it. And, uh, on the overall, and this is from the part three, the overall performance summary, which this section indicates the board's conclusions, uh, as the employee's overall level of, given the performance competencies, ratings, annual goals and so forth. And the, this little section here is to comment regarding employees' overall performance, just two questions, one, best achievement, uh, sounds like an Academy Award. Uh, best achievement, but I put on this a- area maintenance of the triple A rating, which is, uh, and the overall successful development and execution of the private roads policy, so I put both of those, I thought they were really important. And I won't elaborate, we, we learned quite a bit about seeing several others head on the open road policy and the importance of the, the triple A rating. The subject that benefit most from further attention, uh, and I think this is a successful resolution of the long-term needed restoration and renovation of town hall, this, I think, I'm the fifth one probably.
We're.
I mean, I, that's said enough already, yeah, in fact, I discussed that at the end, right, but, yeah. All right, and then in terms of my general evaluation, and, which I've given to coffee, and this goes into the record too, is general comments of my own is, is that I find Chris to be an excellent listener, negotiator and mediator. Especially when working in areas of potential conflict, armed union and other contract or settlement negotiations. He is also a constructive, flexible and creative problem solver, as shown in his effective use of the human resource, financial director and finance, um, uh, uh, director positions. Uh, Chris is very good at recognizing and articulating opposing views while addressing a problem or possible conflict, thus he is able to effectively seek and achieve sustainable compromise. As well, Chris's leadership and proactive negotiation skills have enabled the town to enjoy increasingly productive town and special meetings, which are the bedrock of our grassroots democracy and one of our most prized and respected traditions. I have to get these things in, uh, Chris is very knowledgeable about his position, uh, and role as town manager, and yet he remains willing and eager to engage in new learning and training for himself and others, which I think is important for others as well. Chris conducts himself as town manager with a high level of professionalism and integrity, and I don't mean that lightly. Uh, Chris has made good progress on being organized, timely and clear in his communications with our many town committees and boards, which are essential to the functioning of our town government. However, even more progress, uh, yeah, more progress is needed in this area as effective and dependable citizen and committee support and leadership from the executive branch is the cornerstone upon which lies the credibility and ultimately the effectiveness of our government. Again, I like to deal with preaching in those, I think that is important as well, Chris is effectively increasing his knowledge and use of social media and information age technology essential to the proper functioning of a modern government. The town continues to benefit greatly from Chris's skill and, and strong desire to unite our town both in his civic as well as communal character, that's it. Okay, so, that's, we'll be putting him to his, uh, record along with the others, and that completes his annual review. Uh, and we can move on, Chris made a very fine speech last time, you just need to repeat.
Yeah.
Uh, unless he wants to.
Uh, I'm, I'm good.
Next issue is, uh.
He glances at the clock.
Next issue is, next issue is town hall update.
So, uh, I'm gonna follow up with some good news, um, so one of the challenges that, uh, we faced implementing the town meeting directive on painting was that there had been literally no work on, on that specific subunit. Um, that said, we were moving expeditiously as the board directed and as town meetings voted, um, so when we came to, when I came to last time, we talked, we started to go big. Well, um, and we actually went to the advisor committee two nights later, got the approval and all of that, well, as it turns out, it, but, a- a- as we were going through the awarding of the contracts, our procurement officer, Michelle Leary, has really done great work on this. Um, did some additional follow-up with both the EPA and the Massachusetts Department of Labor Standards, Safe and Health, Safety and Health programs. And determined that, that kind of gold standard lead abatement we were looking for was actually not necessary, uh, because a hundred and fifty year old structure is never gonna get a, 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 a s- a certificate as a de-leaded building, it's just not, it's too old. The lead that's been in there for a hundred and fifty years is not getting out of the wood, so it doesn't mean it's unsafe.
Right.
Unless you go eat the wood or, you know.
Right.
Uh, i- i- it's not gonna be a problem, that's, so there's some, there's something.
You haven't gotten to that level yet.
It's just, don't eat the wood, right?
I did not have dinner.
Uh, let us some ch- I get some chips back, we're okay, we have a little snack.
Okay.
So, we're gonna use something called lead renovation repair and painting method, which is called the RRP method. Which, it ca- you know, it keeps the paint secure and all of that, but we're never gonna get the lead out of the wood, so that's, that's sufficient, and also is at a price that's less than eighty thousand dollars. So, um, it's substantially less expensive than we originally planned, but it also gives us, the nice thing is that not only does it meet our needs and we have a contractor, and we've awarded the contract. It also allows a little bit of flexibility in case we need, as you pointed out last time, Jack, we need to, a little, a change order to maybe replace some other B, Bs or Bors or something.
Right.
Uh, so we have a little cushion we didn't have before. The goal is to have this up and running, we're actually working with a contractor now, the painting contractor, and with the church next door, to see if we get work started in August, so within a couple of weeks, fingers crossed.
Good.
Yeah.
With a goal to have this all done by the end of September, so, okay, so that's where we're moving, uh, weather permitting and everything else permitting, we're on track, so that's the town hall update.
Good.
Very good.
Can I just have a quick, ask a quick question, so, but it is assumed that when we do the full town hall renovation project, that we're gonna have to either repaint or re-side, or that's gonna be a whole different level?
Uh, I would expect that yes, that there would have to be some.
This is not gonna solve everything permanently.
No, 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 uh, 'cause this is, this is a, a topical coat, I mean, you know, you can repaint your car, but if you have a place in the transmission, you're still gonna go back to the same, it's your transmission, right?
Yep.
So, and the transmission of this building is, you know.
I just wanted to set expectations.
No, 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 but that said.
There's actually gonna be two coats, isn't it?
Yeah, it's gonna be a scrape and double coat, right, so, so it should look, it'll look as good as old catholic, right?
Nice, yeah, yeah.
Um, we're not fixing the wind, we're fixing the windows or any of that stuff, and, um, so, the other is, there's the next meeting of the town hall building committee is a week from tonight.
Yeah, we know that.
Uh, so, the committee will continue, we have an agenda, we have, uh, five big items to bang through, so that, that's, unfortunately Paul's gonna be on vacation, but, well, we, I don't know if we'll Skype you in, but we'll, we'll certainly keep you in.
I, yeah.
If you want to, we'll let you do whatever you wanna do, we'll call it, uh, so that's the town hall update for tonight.
Excellent.
One quick question, with the, th- this does not remove the fact that we are going to abate the lead that's on the building, so, so just to reemphasize that.
Oh, no, 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 this is.
The paint that's there probably has lead, we're still following all the legitimate EPA and state requirements for sealing it from lead getting into the embankment.
Yes.
Just to let everyone who's listening or watching at home know.
Right, but, yes, yes, it is, that, that, that said.
It's cheaper, but.
The, the building itself can't be fully de-leaded because it's of the age.
Mm-hmm.
The wood, the, the lead is seeped into the wood most likely, and so the, the building will never be fully lead-free, that said, it, it's not gonna be in a place which would ever harm anybody. And this is all that, we're not even got, we haven't even gotten to the inside yet, this is just exterior stuff, so, the interior will be at a different level when that's all redone.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is just the exterior, yes, it, it's being, the project is designed not to spread it out.
Where it's, where it's intended, right?
Yeah.
And so then the next time we meet, you'll have had this meeting, at least one of them, will we have more concrete as far as where the committee's going in terms of the step, you know, abating?
Well, n- when, yeah, not when we meet tomorrow night, uh, but in a week, in a month, my hope is that like scaffolding around the building and the painting will be, yeah.
No. The twentieth. And, and that it will have more detail as terms of the longer range plan of the town.
Yeah, that's, that's the hope, yeah.
And, yeah, it's, uh, I understand, I'm just, just the conversation, um.
Yeah.
Um.
And we'll talk more about that tomorrow night, so.
Yes, that's a good, good point, any other questions?
No.
All right, very good, uh, ratify facilities contract, which we can go ahead and, uh, yeah, we, we've, uh.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we need to say that we've discussed it already, um?
So, the, the, I, 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 A, this is the first contract for the facilities unit of, um, ASME Council ninety-three, Local thirteen ninety-five. Uh, it's been presented to the board executive session, a- a- and, and I will state now that it is a similar wi- with, with eleven s- comparatively small changes to the DBW contract ratified by the board, uh, six months ago. Uh, and, uh, we're recommending, and, and again, I want to thank Graham Johnson for all her work on this, she actually got this over the finish line, uh, which was a little challenging because of the change of the ASME leadership and the change of the town's facilities unit leadership. But it's done and we're recommending, uh, ratification, so.
Can I make a motion, we approve the agreement that the town had, which is an emergency federation of state county municipal employees, complement of three, Local thirteen ninety-five, Unit A, facilities. For July one, two thousand eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion, I think no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, that's unanimous, Tracy, thank you.
Chris, good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, good job on this.
So, we're now down to one, there's one contract left.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Um.
Which contract is that?
That's the one-member lieutenant police.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, so, we've actually had a very good conversation on that, so, uh, we're.
Okay, town manager update.
So, I, I, just a couple of quick, uh, timing updates, I mentioned that, uh, the, uh, town hall building committee meets a week, the town, um, housing trust, the Colhasset Housing Trust. Meets, uh, a week from tomorrow night, the Mass Housing Partnership is coming in for that meeting to do training, so, um, the Affordable Housing Trust is going to meet for the first time, we're very excited, everyone's gonna be invited to that, I hope you did get the invitation.
Not yet, but.
Okay.
Aren't you on the trust?
Yes.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm invited, I'm invited.
You know, she got an invitation.
Was that, no, she didn't because it hasn't been posted yet.
Okay, so we'll be, all right, so we have to.
Okay. It hasn't been posted, probably.
I thought the meeting was tomorrow night.
Put it on, right.
No, 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 it's a week from tomorrow, next week.
Oh, meet from right.
Could I, could I just recommend, like, that we get notification of met, meeting scheduled even before it gets necessarily posted? Yeah, I agree. 'Cause I, you know, I ran into somebody the other day and.
Well, after. Well, we've been trying to, the key with this.
It's gotta be the thirty-first.
You know, we, we were trying to get the Mass Housing Partnership of Town as the first meeting, uh, as, as, next week, the board itself will start scheduling future meetings.
Ourselves, right.
Yes, correct, the first one had to be coordinated a little differently.
Totally get it.
Right. Uh, so, great, I, I.
The sooner people know, the easier it is to schedule.
I know, I, I, absolute, absolute, so, um, so that is, um, happening next week, um, and, uh, the, um, your tour, uh, the, those of you who are able to sign up. I think we have, do we have one more slot left?
No, it's Thursday noon time.
All right, so there, there, there'll be a, a three-hour harbor tour?
No, just.
Oh, I bring my gowns.
Lost the damages, lost.
Yeah.
Three-hour tour.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe ginger? There was, well, there was three choices.
Are you ginger or?
Yeah.
I talked to Lori, uh, Monday morning, and I'm going tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna be Thursday.
Okay, good, if you get on, that's great.
Okay, she can take you tomorrow at twelve, that's great, okay, and there's one at Thursday at twelve as well.
Absolutely. Okay, good, um, so, um, that, with that fact that they're on.
Nice. Moving forward, yes.
Uh, and, um.
Are you fishing cold?
I did, uh, sign off on a, an application today from the, uh, planning director, um, for, which is going to, uh, it was part of an application for a Mass Housing Works grant. We did apply for a grant and for the, to fund the engineering on the potential relocation of James Brook, so we, we are, as we committed with, uh, the owner.
Yes.
It's such a, we are moving on that as well, so we've applied for a grant, then we signed off and signed off, okay, so, that's a, that's the quick update.
Good.
Okay, just a quick question, um, Chris, on the grants and all that, do we have, like, does, does planning kind of be the centralized thing for applying for various grants, or do we have a mechanism to do that?
Cool. Good.
Um, we are, it's most of, planning, I'd say the, a, a fair chunk of them come through planning, um, that said, um, there's specialty ones too that go at other areas.
Mm.
Um, IT is not a fair number, actually, uh, so I, I'd say, and, and public work, public works has done their own with great, the great community is kind of falls in that zone.
Right.
Uh, planning has done a lot, and again, I, I, I have a list, I'm gonna circulate to all of you of the la- of, of the grants we did over the last two years. When you add in some of the member items we've received and also the, which most certainly counts, the Safe Harbor, uh, grant.
Mm-hmm.
The town's received over one point, received over one point two million dollars in the last two years.
It just seems to me that it might be very effective for the town if we had a centralized grant-making expertise, so even when these different things want to have a grant, they can call up, say, well, we have a grant, we know where it is. And the town could assist them in getting that, bringing a lot of money into the town.
So, we have, we have been doing a lot more of that, uh, so, there isn't a, I, I, I don't know that we're quite big enough to have a full-time grant coordinator, and I also, I think that.
Mm-hmm.
We've been, uh, making sure that folks we hire have grant experience, like Warren in planning, Michelle has experience in grant writing, and Chief Sylvia, uh, Chief, both Chief Quigley's and Sylvia do a fair amount of work.
Okay. Right.
Um, Bill does a f- uh, you know, every year we get two, three, four grants that is focusing on public safety.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Chief Sylvia leded the big fish this last year with a, you know, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar FEMA grant.
Right.
Uh, to increase the, the, the fire force, um, and Brian Joyce nailed a very large one a few years ago, uh, that helped us with FEMA reimbursement redo the Truismor Cause Act, so, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so, so, they're all coordinated through my office.
Okay.
So, I mean, n- nobody applies for a grant unless it comes through here, that was not always the case.
Okay. No, that's why I, I brought it up, and I was wondering whether the planning, that facility seems to be kind of natural urging, because we don't wanna, we don't wanna hire a full-time. But I think somewhere it, it could be a home in, in the government structure to facilitate that.
Uh, I, I, yeah, so, the planner does play a, a, a fairly large role, uh, the prior planner had also Warren, uh, in, in both grant application, also grant management. 'Cause the other key to this is that, once you win it, you have to file a lot of paperwork, even the state stuff has to file a lot of paperwork, and finance actually, so Don is, it, every grant contract goes to the fire science. So, they know, the state is not always great about labeling the money when it comes to us, uh, so, we, he needs to know what we're expecting and so it matches, so, um, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, to that, uh, selectman comments, uh, Jack, you want to start?
Uh, I think, I, I really have to echo the thing on the town water supply, um, you know, I live nearby it, uh, there are two or three well-traveled trails. I know when I was in conservation, we, we had to find, uh, a, a resident for doing that, he didn't pay the fine, they had to track him down. We finally got the stuff removed because he needed a permit, but there are a number of, um, tra- literally trails leading into the aquifer directly over our water supply, and they are just packed with yard debris. And I know that some of it is commercial, and if you think that that is not contaminated, we have variety of lawn chemicals and pesticides, and, um, I, I think we need to. Crucial, the best water in town comes from there, the cheapest water from town, and if that's gone, the pr- price is, is huge.
Yeah, um, just before, and, and Tracy, we're gonna have that on our October twenty of the agenda, so can you do the?
Okay, yeah.
Uh, not that that's gonna solve it, but I wanna make sure we do, I, I do think this seems like a very important issue, Diane?
I, 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 I don't obviously wanna get into a discussion, discussion, but I, I, there are a couple of questions I have that maybe you could find answers to before we discuss on the twen- like, you know, um. What are, are there fines established, are they enough, do we know, you know, who the culprits are, is there a way to s- put signage up, is there a way to put video cameras up?
Yeah.
Like, what are, what are our options to actually, I mean, it's great to have rules, and I'm gonna talk about them in my comments, but.
How do you do it?
You can't enforce everything, you just can't, like, you know, the two or three police cars that are on the road at any given time can't be at every beach finding every scofflaw parking person, but.
Yeah.
I know. The time that we were able to do it, it was because it was in, within the buffer area and they didn't have a conservation permit.
Right.
And, and I happened to actually witness it, and I went to the. And, and I happened to actually witness it, and I went to the, to the perpetrator and I said, you really can't do that.
Right.
And after identifying my, myself as chairman of the conservation, and his reply was, well, make the phone call. And I'm saying to him, I am the phone call.
Where's my, yeah.
But it was a long, Diane, to your point, which is well taken, it was a long cumbersome process to, to get that, that, that done, it was kind of a work.
Yeah.
Well, and similar to, I think, the beach situation we've been dealing with, I do feel like the public needs to know more about this, and if we can think about all, definitely the enforcement issue and figuring out ways to do fines and enforcing it, but also getting maybe a better social media PR campaign so the public knows that this is an issue. I mean, look at what situates going through right now with their water situation. And we are so fortunate we haven't been, you know, dealing with what they're dealing with, but we really could be if, I think, if we don't protect this. So it's a huge issue, and I.
I agree with that. So let's, let's come up with concrete things we can do when we talk about this on the twentieth. I agree with that.
Yeah.
I really wanna, cause this has come up in past years, by the way.
Yeah.
So this really, the fact that it's near our water supply is.
It's right on top.
Well, it's extra accelerated. I don't think we really need to act on this, so it'll be on the agenda until we have a good resolution. Okay, any, next time, comment?
Yeah.
Uh.
Yep. Um, the governor, I believe, has signed the budget, I think it was signed, uh, today or yesterday. Um, the monies that are coming to the state, from the state to, to the town, it's higher, three point seven percent for the, for the schools. Um, it's only up a little bit, I think thirty thousand for the town, but there's a whole bunch of offsets that will probably make it a, a battle wash for percentage increase from last year, although the total percent is up. Um, specifically the special education is funded at seventy-five percent. There's a thirty dollar increase per student up from last year.
Good. Okay, Carrie, Carrie.
Oh.
I mean, I kind of piggybacked off of Jack, but two things. I did my official town hall tour, uh, this past week, and that was eye-opening. I really saw, I think, uh, even a greater need than I even realized of, you know, making improvements on this building and working on that. And I will say the funniest part for me was seeing the jail cell in the basement, and that was actually the most well-air-conditioned of playing with the whole building. But I loved the tour, it was great, and I wanna echo everyone on the board, I think, in saying that we really do wanna work on this. In addition to just getting the paint job done, we have a lot to do with this building. And then one final note, Diane and I attended on Saturday a women's, uh, municipal event at Wellesley College, and that was amazing, and we got to come together with other municipal women elected across the state of Massachusetts, and it was really empowering and inspiring, and we need to get more women running for office at all levels, so if you're watching tonight and you're a woman, run for office.
And you don't have to run, you can actually send an application in and serve on a committee.
Or, yes. Or serve on a committee.
In, in, in many ways have more impact, you know, you look at the alternative energies.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, she's in, Diane?
Um, just, I, I, I wanted Carrie to speak because I was there, I, one of the, one of the things, and I forwarded it to Chris, um, and it made me think about, um, Lauren Goldberg, um, from KP Law. She has a kind of a dog and pony show about open, open meeting law, and it's just like real practical, and it's not, it's not full-on academic. It's something like in fifteen minutes, you know, here's some pitfalls, here's some things to, um, watch out for.
Right. Yeah.
And, um, I, I think we should also talk about doing, you know, the, the committee training thing gets very mixed, um, interest from people. Cause, you know, we have a lot of people that have been on the committees for a long time and know what they're doing and feel like they don't need to be there. And then there's also, you know, people that are like, I give up on my time. So I, I, I did mention this to Chris, I do think we should talk about something maybe more like a open house. You know, you're on a committee, welcome, we're gonna have some snacks and some drinks, we're gonna have like a fifteen-minute literal, you know, uh, speed dating with open meeting law, and just kind of make it more of a fun, you know, so we all get to see some of the people that are serving on committees that we haven't met.
Yeah.
So, um, that Wemo event sort of inspired me to make sure that we do that, because the open meeting law is really important, and little slip-ups can cause big problems, and we haven't done training.
So, why don't we look, why don't we look to do that in September or October, just move ahead with the plans to do it?
Yeah. Yep.
Yep.
But I do agree that it shouldn't be quite such a dry, long legal thing. We don't need that. We need something more.
Yeah.
No.
We don't even need chairs, I mean, like, yeah.
Yeah, I, almost if we get people together and let them network and talk, and we have some experts there, it was a pleasant, is I, the tone of what you're saying, Diane, I agree with, but let's do it.
Yeah.
I, so I, I, I've been talking with Mary, but I think we might be able to incorporate about this generally.
Yep.
Uh, and I think we might have to incorporate some of these, uh, this, this Maya platform and this airboat we talked about, Prime Meeting, to let people, you know,
Yeah.
teach them how to teach them something.
Correct.
And then have them go online, and then they can take a little test that we know they did it.
Yeah.
Uh, and make it as punchy as we can, but I, 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 let's, we'll try to.
Yeah, like that state office stuff.
Yeah, it might be a good, yeah, and a good format to introduce new, new ideas and concepts, and something that the people, when they go to, they'll say, gee, I learned this tonight, and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Might be a bad way to kick off the fall season.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm going at, right? Make it more of a thing. And then just really quickly, another thing that I have put on Chris's kind of radar, but also
Yeah, exactly. September, October's good for that.
I think we definitely need to talk about it in September, which is looking at the parking fines. Um, you know, I, I was told off the other day at Black Rock Beach by somebody who didn't have a parking sticker, and I said, you need a sticker to park here, and I got all kinds of, um, you know, and, and unhappy comments. And apparently this person said she, she lives in Cohasset, and she, but she doesn't have any time, cause she works, to get a sticker, and I specifically said, do what I do, I work too, do, do what I do and go online. So, anyway, I, I, I do think there's a lot of discussions to be had about how, especially Sandy Beach, you know, what, what are we, is there a different model for stickers? And then enforcement and, and fines, you know, and
Yeah.
a fifty dollar, a thirty-five dollar, I don't know what it is, parking ticket is nothing.
For a day at the beach on Sandy Beach.
For, for a day at the beach with, with five adults, right, so.
I live, I lived in Wellesley, and I can come down, I do it all day long.
Just, I wanted to say that in, in selectman comment, just so everybody hears it, that it's top of mind for me, and that's it.
Okay, so, my comments, we wanna talk about quickly, um, we got a, a draft with changes on the que- on the municipal harbor plan, you got it?
Yeah.
In an email. I looked it over quickly, you know, it is, it's fairly, it was, well, it's not only it's ninety pages or so, but it's got a lot of changes to it that wasn't in the last draft. It says significantly changed document actually. This is gonna be, the municipal harbor plan is gonna be a very important focus for us going on forward, really. And it's a, it's a, the harbor is the heart of the town here, and this municipal harbor plan will set the stage for, or actually make changes to how we work with the harbor, what goes on in the harbor, how it's, this plan here is, is proposing some significant changes to how it's governed, and I don't wanna get into that right now. What I do wanna say is, is that, is, this obviously is gonna be, uh, a big project. It's gonna require a lot of, your individual as well as our collective knowledge and discussion to become up to speed so that we make the right decisions on this. It's a big deal. Uh, so, and it's gonna be something that we're gonna be dealing with for quite a while, and even the harbor plan itself,
Yeah.
uh, it's gonna take us quite a while really to figure out, you know, what we want this to look like in its final form. Um, so, this is what I propose. We do start off as a committee, cause we need to start to get into it, is, is that our assignment will before October, August twentieth meeting is, is for each of us to read this, okay? And then just make, I would say, general notes, so that we, we need to bite this off in a way that we can chew it, you know? So just the, each person, I think, should come to the next meeting with one page or two, of just eight or nine or ten points so that they see that they like to discuss based on, or that what they think is important on this report, so that we can start this dialogue, and then as we do that dialogue, we'll get a better feel for, for what we need to do and so forth. But we, we're gonna need to do a lot of, a digesting and conversation, because, uh, it's a very, cause what happens with this report is, is it is, it's not like the master plan, which is done by the, eh, eh, committee, it's the planning, it's the planning, uh, uh, committee is the one that approves it and runs it, you know, that's, we don't really. This here is a report from the board of select, we have, we have responsibility to this, and it's gonna go to the state at some point. And this is scheduled, is, uh, yeah, okay, we'll get into all that more, but our first step, I think, will be, is everybody read it, make some notes on major things, we'll go around the table, so to speak, next, and stack to chew out some, what some of these major issues are, and then we'll sort of take it from there. But this will be on our agenda for a number of meetings. But I think the best way for us to tackle it is to consistently keep at it. We'll get better and better, but we need to learn a lot about the harbor as a committee, and we're gonna need to learn a lot about this report, because we're responsible for.
All right. Could I just make a suggestion, because, um, I, I've, I've read both reports, and, you know, my understanding is they're, they're really frameworks for discussion and topics to go forward. And I would love to have, now that the master plan has been adopted by the planning board, I would love to have that as a kind of a foundational discussion before we get too far down in the municipal harbor plan, because the harbor plan, in my opinion, is really a subset of the, the master plan and the vision for the entire community. So I would, I would benefit by, and we did talk at one point about having a separate meeting where we get an update from planning, you know, the, the planning board saying, we adopted this, here are the, here are the ten takeaways. We envision the community should be doing this and spending time on that, and then, so that I can understand how this municipal harbor plan and the recommendations or the frameworks set out within that will serve the master plan, which is the master plan, you know?
Right.
And I don't feel like I have, I mean, I've read it, but I don't feel like I have a handle of really what the takeaways and next steps are.
I, I absolutely, I mean, I've been going to these meetings, harbor, um, versus liaison for conservation, and going to a lot of these meetings, and they're now having, subcommittee meetings at eight o'clock in Monday mornings that are supposed to be open to the public, and that might be an issue, cause not really practically speaking, open the public at eight o'clock on a Monday morning.
I'll challenge that, because, I mean, I think they, they find a quorum.
Well, I, I, that, it, it may be.
Seven P M isn't easy for a lot of people either.
Well, I, I know, but it, they may have a quorum, but I, I would suggest that you're, it's not accessible to a large percentage of the population. But anyway, to your point, the, that these are interrelated, the harbor plan and the master plan are inter, are interrelated, and with this latest, um, changes for the harbor plan, which kind of came in the last ten days, which is significant changes. And I believe that they're gonna have, um, they may vote to approve this on August seventh.
Keep in mind, whatever they do, the, the only approval that's important on the harbor plan is ours.
Okay.
So, uh, what, what they may do is, is, uh, make a recommend, their approval will be a recommendation to us, so.
I just, just.
We have to, we, we have to work on our own schedule, and it's from, looking at this quickly, I think it says that, this is a big deal, and so they, we even have until December twenty twenty to get this to the state.
Yeah.
Now, my guess is, we have an active harbor committee, like we do some other committee, so they're probably gonna wanna have this, but I, you know, we're gonna have to take the time to do this right.
I just, passing on the information.
No, 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 they'll greatly said, you know, properly said. So, uh, yeah, they may, but we have to be, we have to be in, this is a, like in our early discussions, we need to be in charge here, because this harbor thing can get, go astray, if it, especially if it gets, you know, from the master plan and other things too, so I'm trying to get this properly right. So, I kind of, you seem to agree with what Diane's saying, and I do too. I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
So let's, let's change the, the proposal. This is what we'll do, is that Chris and I'll reach out to master plan, which would be the planning people, and have, the, our next move will be for them to come to the meeting, hopefully August twentieth, but our process is gonna be this. We're gonna hear from the master plan, as Diane is suggesting, get a review of that completely, so we're comfortable with that. And we'll, you'll know when it's on the agenda, so have a copy of it and read it, so, this is a lot of, there's a lot more work than I've seen us have to do in past wars. What, what we've had is, we've had these three big plans going on, well, they've frutated on our watch, so, you know, this is not always this way, but it's gonna be this way for a while, so.
Yapping on you.
Our next move will be to have the master plan come. Once we have that, then we're gonna go ahead and set up, uh, where we will have this discussion. In the meantime, try to get some time to read this, but this discussion will, we will have either with us.
Do you still want a, a list from everybody of their thoughts on that, or?
I would, I think that you should start, I looked at this quickly and actually read two or three sections. This is much more detailed and significant.
Mm-hmm.
They're even making proposals to change the local law laws, which is gonna have a big impact on what can go on in the harbor. Uh, I don't wanna get too far into this. They're making some po- possible proposals of maybe looking at having the harbor run by a harbor commission that has the authority to collect taxes and vote on borders. This is a big deal. This would essentially be making a commission that is economically independent from the town, just at first blush.
Right.
It concerns me. And, uh, so we just, all I want is my, you, you know, things, I want us to be well-read and educated on this, and then we'll decide what to do.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna be rushed into making decisions on this. So my advice is, is that, that everybody read this, and start to make your list, cause you're gonna have a lot of discussions on this. And what Chris and I are gonna do is set up where our next meeting will be for, for the, uh, uh, for the master plan people to come in, and we'll also, will, Chris and I'll discuss about getting this on the following agenda. And, uh, as a side thing, Chris and I am, I am these special meeting, uh, the meetings every, periodically with the chairman of the, of the, uh, of the harbor committee to help with coordination, so, um, there's activity going on here to make sure that this is, goes as well as possible. Sorry to be so windy, but this is, we need to, board of selectmen need to manage this process and manage what's going on in this community can be a problem otherwise, in my view.
So, so, yeah, just two quick follow-ups. One is that, uh, Jack, and you insinuated that this has been changed recently, unexpectedly? Is that something that, do we have the current copy?
Yeah, well, what I can remember, the last time, we've had two or three times, here or something, it said to us.
There was one recently sent to us, like, within the last.
Well, let, let me, let me just finish, cause I can answer your question. It was specifically was said to us, if, if you read either what's online or what's you had, which was the last time I read this, which was six or seven weeks ago, there's nothing's been changed, and it doesn't really matter. When I read this, I was shocked to see how much has been changed, but it doesn't really matter. It is what it is, whether it's been changed or not, at least from my own personal point of view.
That, that, to be, to be, to be. Answer your question. The, the email that Tim Davis said.
Yeah. This weekend, yeah.
Yeah, he said there's been a, they've made a lot of changes.
Okay, all right.
That, that, I'm just quoting Tim, not.
I just printed the thing, I didn't read the whole thing.
Yeah, well, that's.
Little closely, I just wanted to make sure I had the current copy.
Yeah.
Well, no, you do the last one from Tim Davis, that's the one I'm gonna be reviewing, and that's the one.
So, okay, yeah, okay, yeah. That's the most current one.
Because we don't have the final yet, but it'll give us enough, so we need this.
And I was just quoting him.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to get in and start discussing this, cause the final one will probably look similar to that. At least what comes from them, but what we need to understand is, that's, okay, I won't repeat myself. We, we, we got a lot of work to do after that, and we're gonna be living with this for a while.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and then just, I, I just, no, I, but I do think one of the first things we need to do with the harbor committee is, again,
Did you have nothing?
we borrowed, it is a bylaw committee with very specific, like, management of the harbor, and, and like, there used to be a time where they were the oversight of the harbor master. And then when the Town Manager Act came into play, the harbor master felt, so, right now it's on paper, and I, I'm sorry, I get weird about bylaws, but I think we need to be sensitive to if there are changes, because we have, if we have to go to town meeting for something. I do think the harbor committee, as it currently exists, we were kind of borrowing the structure in the bylaws, we were giving them the charge to, to work with a consultant and develop this plan, which we would then discuss, but in my mind, we need to give them some guidance and next steps sooner rather than later.
Just report. Well, yeah, that was why I was gonna do this next meeting, but you've got a good idea. This is gonna slow this down.
Right. I think it needs some context.
No, no, I understand, but that's why this is gonna take a little while longer, and it should, but we're gonna do the master plan thing first, so.
Right.
This is, and that's why it's gonna take time, that's all. And if we think this becomes important enough, or we have a special meeting, maybe we will, but I wouldn't pressure ourselves to be too accelerated on a bigger deal like this. We, 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 we're gonna have to deal with this wherever the group wants to, the team wants to do it.
Just to remind everyone that tomorrow night is the conversation about the follow-up to the big goals with some specific objectives.
Right.
Next steps on the master plan, and I use that in a global sense.
All of them, yes, good point.
Is, is central to this conversation. So Warren, Mazzia, her, Mazzia, her planner, we're presenting some proposals, just so, about next steps.
Excellent, right. We just gave a preview of tomorrow night.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, enough on that then. Um, okay, um, let me see, man, so it's mine or yours?
Had to do this again. Fine.
The next thing is the minutes to six twenty-five nineteen. Do I have a motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes of six twenty-five, two thousand nineteen, Board Selectmen.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay, unanimous. Tracy, the minutes to seven two nineteen, meeting.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of seven two to two thousand nineteen, Board Selectmen, you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay, unanimous, Tracy. Seven nine nineteen minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of seven nine nineteen, Board Selectmen, you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Approved, unanimous, to Tracy. There's no topics that are, uh, reasonably anticipated in twenty-eight hours in advance. I'll ask for motion to adjourn, so.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, unanimous, Board Selectmen, you.
Aye.